We look forward to a productive meeting. If I could ask everyone to stand for the invocation by the Reverend Darren Keithley, Pastor at Shattilaw in church, and if you would remain standing after the invocation for the Pledge of Allegiance. Reverend, thank you for coming.
Thank you. I'm gonna open in prayer by reading Second Chronicles 7:14 and then close with verse 15.
Reverend, could I interrupt you one second?
Yes, sir.
Before you say your invocation, I would ask that we have a moment of silence to remember the victims that lost their life in church in Texas. And just a moment of silence, you could lead the invocation, please. Thank you.
Second Chronicles 7:14. "If my people who are called by my name humble themselves and pray and seek my face and turn from their wicked ways, then I will hear from heaven and I will forgive their sin and heal their land. Gracious heavenly Father, we turn to your eternal word, your promises that are yes and amen, and we take hold of the promise that is Second Chronicles 7:14, that we humbly pray to the King of all kings and Lord of all lords, acknowledging that you and you alone are God and that I am not. I pray that we seek your face, turning from our wicked ways, and I ask, God, that you forgive me for exalting my own agenda above yours. We want to hear from heaven. For all of the heavenly resources, the wisdom of perfect governance be extended to every leader here in Virginia Beach. Let your perfect will, your promises, your word be done on earth as it is in heaven. Heaven, we're the perfect rule that brings perfect peace, so, Father, begin in me and reign within me. Your forgiveness and reign brings peace beyond understanding. Places where there once were longstanding division, there can be unity. Where others have torn down, you build community. We ask, God, to teach us how to love your people like you love them, to see them as you see them, Father God. I pray humbly that we seek you and turn to you." And the Lord God continues in Second Chronicles 7:15. "Now my eyes will be open and my ears attentive to the prayer that is made in this place." Hallelujah. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Reverend, thank you again for coming. We really appreciate it. Do I have a motion for the certification of the closed session?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? I'll call for the question, please.
By a vote of nine to zero, you have approved this closed session to be in accordance with the motion to recess.
Do I have a motion for approval of the minutes of October 17th, 2017?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? I'll call for the question, please.
By a vote of nine to zero with Mr. Wood abstaining, we have approved the minutes assessed.
I have some presentations to make, if I could counsel. If I could ask Chief Lockamy from the Nansman Indian Tribe to come forward, please. Come forward. We're so glad to have you here today. And it is my pleasure to read this proclamation. Native Americans have made use of the natural resources in Virginia and Virginia Beach for over 15,000 years, whereas Native Americans prospered in Virginia as hunters and gatherers for thousands of years, living in bands and encampments, whereas Native Americans developed tribal relationships and settled in hamlets and villages, and whereas the Chesapeake Indian Tribe resided in a village in Virginia Beach at the time of or just prior to the early 17th century settlement of the region by England, whereas members of the Nansman Indian Tribe moved eastward settling into areas that included Virginia Beach, and whereas an Indian reservation in the Punggau area of Virginia Beach was occupied by the Nansman Indians in the late 17th century, and whereas the Commonwealth of Virginia officially recognized the Nansman Indian Tribe in 1985, whereas members of the Nansman Indian Tribe play an essential role in the Virginia Beach community today, and whereas Chief Lee Lockamy is a resident of the city of Virginia Beach, and whereas November was first declared as Native American Heritage Month in the United States of America in 1990, and whereas November is also commemorated as Native American Heritage Month in the Commonwealth of Virginia. Now therefore, I, William B. Sussums Jr., Mayor of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, do hereby proclaim November 2017 Native American Heritage Month in Virginia Beach and call upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses and schools in Virginia Beach to recognize the contributions of Native Americans to the history and development of the city, state, and nation, and to commemorate this month with appropriate activities. Chief, if may I present this to you. We're glad to have you here.
Mr. Mayor, I'm very proud to say that Lee serves on the Historic Preservation Commission and does a wonderful job as a member of that group.
Thank you so very much. I have another special presentation. If Nicholas and Nicole Sharp could come forward, please. Good to see you here. It is my pleasure to read this resolution. Whereas the health of our community's people is the foundation for a caring and productive society, and our future rests with our ability to adequately treat and ultimately find cures for individuals who are afflicted with a variety of illnesses, including pulmonary hypertension. Whereas pulmonary hypertension, known as PH, is a chronic life-threatening lung disease marked by elevated blood pressure in the lungs, whereas without treatment, PH patients live an average of 2.8 years past diagnosis, whereas multiple treatments are available for PH, but it takes patients an average of nearly three years to be accurately diagnosed. This delay in diagnosis has not changed in the past 20 years. Whereas PH patients who are diagnosed earlier have a longer life expectancy, whereas education can help with early diagnosis, funding for research can help find a cure, and whereas the Pulmonary Hypertension Association is a nonprofit organization that seeks ways to prevent and cure pulmonary hypertension, as well as to provide hope for the PH community through support, education, and advocacy. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City of Virginia Beach hereby calls all citizens to recognize the seriousness of this disease and the meritorious work of the Pulmonary Hypertension Association to find a cure and recognize November 2017 as Pulmonary Hypertension Awareness Month. May I present this to you? Thank you. Something, another special thing. Where's Don Horsley? Don, we're glad to have you here. Thank you, ma'am. It's my pleasure to read, whereas Donald H. Horsley graduated from Virginia, that place called Virginia Tech. Go Hokey! I gotta be honest. Whereas Donald H. Horsley graduated from Virginia Tech State University with a bachelor's science degree in animal science in 1970. After graduation, he moved to Virginia Beach and began working on the farm owned by his father-in-law, Ralph Frost. Whereas Mr. Frost retired in 1988 and turned the farming operation consisting of approximately 1,400 acres over to Don. Today, land of promised farms is a four-way partnership among Don, his wife Diane, and their two adult sons Shane and Ryan. The farming operation consists of approximately 6,000 acres, including corn, soybeans, and wheat, with several niche enterprises. 15 acres of locally marketed sweet corn, a farrow-to-finish show pig operation, commercial cattle operation, and a pick-your-own pecan grove. Don benefited by developing the niche enterprises in order to diversify his farm operation and fluctuating commodity prices. Whereas Don has been successful in his farming operation by implementing new technologies in row crop production using regular soil testing, scouting to detect pests during the growing season, and monitoring yields during harvest to maximize his commodity profits. For years, Don has provided a strong voice for agriculture to local government by serving as a member of the Virginia Agriculture Reserve Program Committee, Agricultural Advisory Commission, Planning Commission, the Advisory Committee for the Tywater Agricultural Research and Extension Center, and serves as a model for the 4-H youth development. Don is also active at the state and national government levels, most recently being appointed by Governor McAuliffe to the Board of Agriculture and Consumer Services. Whereas Don has received numerous awards, including the Virginia Farmer of the Year 2011, Virginia Pork All-American in 1986, Virginia Beach Man of the Year in Agriculture 1984, Regional Virginia Dare Soil and Water Conservation District Clean Water Farm Award 2000, and the Virginia Beach Exceptional Agricultural Operation Award 2005. Whereas on October 21st, 2017, Don was inducted into the Virginia Livestock Hall of Fame, which was established for the purpose of bestowing honor and recognition upon outstanding Virginians who have made significant contribution to Virginia's livestock industry and its people. Don is one of the 63 to be honored with three portraits on permanent display in the gallery at the Virginia Tech Alvin Stewart Livestock Arena. Now therefore, it be resolved that the Virginia Beach City Council pause in its deliberations to pay tribute to a dedicated community leader by expressing congratulations for all his many achievements, including most recently being inducted into the Virginia Livestock Hall of Fame, and that is signed by all council members. Don. Now you're getting one for the Punggau newspaper. Thank you. Congratulations. Yes, sir. Sure. Help yourself.
Mayor Sussums and Vice Mayor Jones and members of council, this is indeed an honor for me to receive this award. It's not possible without a large contingent of support behind you. My family is, family and friends are the reason that I could do these things and receive these awards. And a lot of them are here tonight. Most of my family is here tonight, and I just wanted you to know that. And I don't know whether you remember, but one of the first awards in my adult life from farming-
I remember.
-was presented by a mayor who was not mayor at the time, back in the 70s, with the Virginia Beach J.C.'s as the outstanding young farmer of the year.
I remember.
And that was the first award that I've received in my adult life.
It was the first one ever gave.
Yeah. And it is indeed an honor to receive this tonight, but I just want to give credit to the people who support me and family and friends that have helped me get as far as we've gotten.
Well, Don, we thank you and we appreciate everything you do for our community. You're a big part of the success of making the city what it is, the greatest city in the world, and we thank you, sir.
I agree. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'm opening a public hearing on the declaration and conveyance of excess property Indian River and Kempsville Roads.
No speakers, Your Honor.
Okay, now we'll go to the consent agenda. Mr. Vice Mayor, good luck.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move for approval under-
We need to pull number three.
Hold up. Excuse me one second.
We need to pull number three. We have a speaker since we've come in here.
Okay, number three?
Yes, sir, on the consent.
Okay, so-
I'll start over again.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to move for approval under the consent agenda, first under ordinances and resolutions, item 2A, which is a resolution to refer to the Planning Commission proposed amendments to the city zoning ordinance, ray definition requirements and use of home share-
We're gonna have to show, we have speakers on that. It's 2B.
2B, excuse me. I'm sorry. I apologize.
No problem.
Resolution referred to the Planning Commission proposed amendments to the city zoning ordinance, ray proposed amendments to section 111 and 218, ray definition of major retail venue. Item J4, which is ordinance to declare excess city property at Indian River and Kempsville Roads and authorize city manager to exchange same to the Betty H. Buzzzy Revocable Living Trust. Item J6, which is resolution to request the state and federal governments proceed with widening and deepening of the Hampton Roads Harbor channels, and J7, which is ordinance to extend the date to satisfy conditions, ray closure of Lake Avenue, Oak Street, and portions of Locust Crescent and Ellis Avenue in the Bayside District, and J9, which is the ordinance to accept and appropriate A, $4 million from FEMA, ray Virginia Task Force II, Urban Search and Rescue Team mobilization to support Hurricane Maria operations, B, $302,000 from U.S. Department of Justice to the police, ray body worn cameras, and C, $10,000 from the U.S. Department of Justice to the police, ray naloxone.
Open a public hearing for planning.
Under planning for consent, item K1, it's the application of William and Christian Hickey in the Kempsville District. Item 2, it's the application of TM SSR LLC and Village Drive Commons LLC in the Beach District. Item 3, which is the application of KABP Development LLC in the Princess Anne District. Madam Clerk, please note that the mayor is abstaining on that item.
Yes, Your Honor.
Item 4 is the application of Kadu LLC and Fairfax Sixplex LLC in the Rose Hall District. Madam Clerk, please note that the mayor is abstaining on that item.
Yes, Your Honor.
Item 5 is the application of Rhett, Rebold, and Derek Bortay in the Beach District, and Madam Clerk, please note the mayor's abstaining on that item.
Yes, Your Honor.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? Is there any discussion? I'll call for the question, please.
By a vote of nine to zero, you have approved the consent agenda as read by the vice mayor.
And council, please understand I'm gonna do the best I can. If you see I skip something, I welcome your correction. We'll start with item number 1, the ordinance to amend city code regarding Cavalier Shore Neighborhood Residential Department parking, deferral to November 20th, 2018. This was on consent. I gather we have one speaker?
Yes, sir. Mr. Reed Grenham?
We welcome you, sir.
You want to read the time stipulations?
Thank you, ma'am.
Some people may not know-
I want to remind everyone that the city council speaker policy that allows certain representatives of groups to speak for 10 minutes applies only to planning items and items where a public hearing is requested by state law. As to all other items on the agenda, each speaker, whether speaking individually or on behalf of a group, will have three minutes to speak. And I apologize for not doing it.
Oh, no. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, members of city council. Normally, if someone is in favor of this and it's on consent, you wouldn't pull it. But I did want to make a comment that while I support the overall program to provide parking for the residents, there was a lot of discussion about providing employees of the Cavalier Hotel with parking passes in the residential, and it just seemed to me that defeated the entire purpose of it, which was to make sure that people who lived there were able to park near their homes. And so while I will be back on November 20th, I wanted to take the opportunity just to-
2018.
2018. To consider that, because I thought it was a good idea to make sure those people could do that, and that was my one objection. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Wait a minute. Barbara Messner wants to speak, please.
Okay. Barbara, we welcome you.
Good evening, Mayor. I spoke the last time, and it was my understanding that the developer was supposed to provide parking when the Cavalier was approved, and he had plenty of parking, which he's building on, all those residences. Yeah, I've lived at the Beach 40 years, and I know what a problem parking is. You've done the parking passes for residents, and also 21st Street, y'all approved new development on the 21st and 22nd. They didn't have enough parking. Now they get residential parking only where the general public used to be able to park. It's the same thing here. On 25th Street, the approval, I'm sure you remember the Breed and I Fly Project, Mr. Sussums? The 25th Street parking, which was for the general public, now has meters that say resident pass parking only, so people living in condos close by. You're approving projects that don't have public parking, and the Cavalier never should have been approved with taxpayer subsidies, and we shouldn't be restricted from parking on public streets, so the developers get parking. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call for the question, please. This was-
By a vote of nine to zero, you have approved the application.
Resolution to refer to the Planning Commission proposed amendments to the city zoning ordinance, definition requirements and use of home sharing and short-term rentals. This was on consent as well, but we understand the speakers are fine with it being on consent, but they still wanted to speak.
I have several speakers, Your Honor.
Please.
Michael Maggi.
We welcome you tonight.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'm Mike Maggi. I live on Bay Island. I came to Virginia Beach in around 1986 in the Navy. After about 10 years, I got out of the Navy as a Navy SEAL and decided to stay in the city. Since then, I've started and still run a successful construction company, and over the years, I've acquired many multiple rental properties. Sorry for not shaving, but it's almost hunting season, so I had to-
You gotta have your priorities.
Yeah. But I'm here tonight just to ask a few questions, and I understand it's on the consent agenda, and I agree with that, to go to Planning Commission, and I'll be talking with those people as well. But I have a couple of major concerns. As we all know, the devil's in the details, and hopefully we'll work those out during Planning Commission. But the first concern I have is only allowing one contract per seven days. If that isn't acted, I believe that's a taking of my property rights, because if that isn't enacted, it will significantly impact the revenues that my property could possibly produce. So that's a major issue I have. The second one is there's a requirement that possibly would have to have a conditional use permit if properties weren't registered prior to January 1st of this year. Again, that would be a major concern, because we all know how hard it is and what goes into getting a conditional use permit. So hopefully, they can either come up with an overlay district like was discussed, or move that timeframe forward from January 1st of this year, move it forward a little bit since the resolution has been made, maybe after that resolution. Thirdly, it was mentioned that real estate professionals will be exempt from the requirements. My wife has been and is a very successful real estate agent in the city for quite a while, and so I'm wondering if she and we would be exempt just because she's an agent, or is that just for real estate companies? You know, for example, like Atkinson, they manage a lot of rental properties. And so my question is if our individual is gonna be treated or held to a different standard than real estate companies, and I think that's a major concern. If it's good for the goose, it should be good for the gander, you know, as it goes with that. But again, I understand that you're not voting on this proposal this evening, and again, I support it going to Planning Commission, and I will be speaking with them, but I just wanted to bring a few of those concerns to the council this evening before it goes to Planning Commission.
We appreciate that, but you hit the nail on the head. This has just started tonight. There are a lot of things that have been presented, and nothing has, I mean, it's for discussion. I'm glad you're there, but go to Planning Commission and work there.
We will.
Okay. Thank you for coming down.
Thank you, sir.
Next speaker.
Lawrence Harvath.
We welcome you tonight, sir.
I'm a member of the Board of Directors of the Bay Lake Pine Civic League. We have about 340 families in our neighborhood. We have 70% membership in our civic league. By unanimous vote at the last meeting, we passed a resolution, a position statement, in favor of strong regulation of short-term rentals, and that was based on two recent occurrences in our neighborhood. We had a house sell up on the waterfront, and it was bought by an investor, I guess, that decided to rent it out for weekly rentals for the past two summers, and it has just destroyed, it ruined the lives of the people around those houses. There's been fireworks, parties, crowded parking, garbage. The house hasn't been well-maintained. It's been a disruption, and this is proliferating on the online platforms like bookings.com, Airbnb, and I'm guilty, I've actually rented Airbnbs, and I gotta tell you, I will never, ever rent an Airbnb in a residential neighborhood ever again. In the last place we did it, the looks we got from our neighbors were icy, and that's just putting it mildly. It was a terrible experience. So I'm here to say that, yeah, we're in favor of passing it on to the commission. We hope you encourage the commission to draft strong ordinances, because this, we believe, is one of the biggest threats we are facing in our neighborhoods that I've ever seen and that we've ever seen. And I just wanted to make one last point. The house around the corner from mine, I'm retired recently. I thought I was gonna enjoy my house. It was advertised on Estatly.com, which is an online real estate agency, and I quote from their website, "You could potentially make $5,333 a month by renting this entire home on Airbnb." So this is happening quickly, and it's terribly disruptive, potential. That's-
Thank you very much for coming down. Appreciate it. Next speaker, please.
Doug Houston.
We welcome you tonight, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Good evening, Mayor, city council. My name is Doug Houston. I'm a 40-year Virginia Beach resident. I've owned a home in Chesapeake Beach for 30 years and have rented it on a vacation basis for the last 10 years. Along with my father, I've been involved in vacation rentals on the Chesapeake Bay for 40 years. I am opposed to the minimum seven-day rental rule. I've had guests rent for three or four days for many years without any incident. Without the benefit of less than seven-day rentals, my shoulder months would remain empty and would force me to rent my property on an annual basis with the loss of income for my family. Beyond my own personal interest, you know, I always thought of, I still do, think of the beach as a progressive city, and I think about two years ago renting a place in Seattle, visiting my daughter for one night through Airbnb. My wife and I were in Charlottesville, visiting my son in April, two nights Airbnb. I can't imagine someone wanting to bring their family down here for a long weekend, Memorial Weekend for three days, or I think of the millennials, that we all want millennials to come here. They come here for a job interview, and the first thing they do is go to Airbnb, and they say, "Seven days. You have to rent for seven days." It's like, I can't imagine them coming to the beach, and that's what they see. So I would respectfully request that council, along with Planning Commission, squash the seven-day rule. It's not in our best interests as a city. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Stephen Fisher.
We welcome you.
Thank you very much. Way out of my comfort zone.
Don't be that way.
Thanks for having me, Honorable Mayor and city council members. I'm a Green Run graduate, Virginia Tech graduate, and-
You got me again.
When I graduated and I was able to move back, I had to move to Northern Virginia to find work, and able to move back and found a dream house down at Cape Story by the Sea. I'm a school teacher, and to be able to live by the beach and live on the teacher's salary is a dream come true. We've always struggled, but we've been using Airbnb lately, and it's helped out the financial situation of my family. situation of my family. And it's also, I've had an opportunity to meet a lot of nice people from all over. We've had people from as far as Germany and Canada. But we get a lot of professors from Charlottesville and Richmond and the DC area. It's been a pleasant experience for us. And it works, the model works better for me than doing the year-round rental. We've had incidents with people that were living there year-round that were a nightmare. They trick you when they come in, and at least with Airbnb, you get reviews, and I can see who's coming in. But sometimes, when you're trying to go year-round, they might pull the wool over, and there's nothing you can do for a year with somebody living right underneath of you. And they're having the parties and they're doing the things like that. So for us, the models work really well. I'm opposed to the seven, having only one potential guest in seven days. I have a gentleman named John standing there this evening, and I said, "Well, I'm going to City Council to see if I can make sure you can come back in the future." I have a, on Friday, I have a gentleman coming in from England for five or six days going to a local conference. So I don't understand how that would work in the future if that part of the whole, if that were to go through. I don't know how to make it a business decision in the future. Do I go with the two-day gentleman that I've met a few times? Or do I gamble and wait and see if I can get a five-day in the future? I don't see how that model works for me to continue a good business. I just wanted to add that on Shore Drive, we only have one hotel, and I'm afraid that hotel's going to go away. I want it to stay. I have my friends stay there still. When people come and they stay, I introduce them to the city. I'm an ambassador for the city. And they spend their money in the restaurants, the local breweries, doing eco tours. They go down to the oceanfront and listen to music. I presume they go back and tell their friends what a great place Virginia Beach is, because we've had nothing but great reviews. I just hope that we can minimize the, just, I hope we don't over-regulate it and make it a non-effective tool.
Thank you very much for coming down.
Appreciate your time.
Appreciate it very much. Next speaker.
That's all the speakers, your honor.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a... Have a motion and a second? Is there any discussion? I'll call for the question, please.
By a vote of ten to zero, you have approved the...
Item number three, ordinance to establish a tax rate of 40 cents per hundred of assessed value on computer equipment and peripherals used in a data center effective January 1st to 2018. Call the speaker, please.
Reed Grenham.
Reed, we welcome you back.
Thank you, mayor. This evening, I'm speaking on behalf of the Virginia Beach Tea Party. And it's rare that we can come up and compliment our city council on something that you're doing. As you know, the Tea Party stands for taxed enough already, and we would like to encourage you to reduce taxes on things. We feel that with this transatlantic cable that's coming in and the opportunity to promote data centers, this was a wise move on your part. We also would encourage you to consider, why stop at four cents per hundred? Why not just simply eliminate it altogether in the interest of encouraging businesses to come here and grow data centers? So we applaud what you're doing. And I know that's kind of unusual, but the Tea Party thinks great job on that. And the other thing I'd like to say to you is, I haven't seen all the details of this, but you may want to be a little more specific in how you define what a data center is to make sure that this particular ordinance is not misused in an unintended way. It's excellent to encourage high-paying jobs, bring them into our city. And we just want you to be very careful to make sure that this isn't something that gets out of control. But once again, thank you from the Tea Party.
Thank you very much for coming down. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I got a motion, a second, any discussion? Call for the question, please.
By a vote of ten to zero, you have approved the data center.
Resolution to direct the city manager to terminate the arena development agreement should USM not close on its construction loan by 11:59 PM on November 7th, 2017. You have a speaker?
Reed Grenham.
We welcome you back, sir. Why don't you just stay there?
Yeah, sorry. Which one am I speaking on?
On the arena.
The arena, okay. On the issue of the arena, I don't agree with this project, but I particularly don't agree building it in the location that you're doing. In February, we had the city come and speak to the Tea Party about flooding. And it turned out that the area where we're planning to put this arena is already at a saturation level in its current state. And if you add additional things like fieldhouses, parking lots, and these things you're doing, you actually put at risk flooding our convention center and surrounding shadow lawn neighborhoods. And we were kind of taken back by what we were learning from the city planning department. So the idea of bringing an arena and doing that in the private sector is not a bad idea. But where you're thinking about putting it with hurricanes, floodings, and all those risks is probably not the best investment, let alone the traffic. So having said all of those things, when I read your paperwork online, I understood that if the people had not closed by the 6th, which was yesterday, that that would end the final extension that you gave. Mr. Moss explained that while that actually was the 7th, and that you had to direct the city manager to send a letter to formally notify the arena people that the deal is off because they failed to meet their second extension. Hopefully, this deal will not come to pass. I don't think all the money we're tying up will happen. But the last point I would say to you is, you gave them several extensions. It's been years. It's been since 2015. Rushing all that stuff to get out that to you today and give it to the city attorney to make a decision if it's compliant with the original terms of the agreement or not at the last minute is simply bad business. And I would encourage you tonight, whatever you do in your deliberations, not to grant another extension, but rather live up by the commitment that you made. They had the opportunity. They didn't meet the deadlines on the 6th. Let them come back later with a different package, whatever you want to do, but please stick by your original agreement. And putting all of this out at the last minute is really an indication of bad business from my point of view. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other speakers?
Pat Caldwell.
We welcome you tonight, sir.
Hello. Hello. I think Reed should be required to change clothes between speeches. As I understand what I read on the agenda, and I, first of all, I apologize. I normally am here in a suit, but I came over last minute tonight. But I, as I understand it, this is simply voting on whether or not to, maybe there's not even a vote, to resolve, to terminate the agreement. Now, just, I was trying to go back through the videos and my notes this evening, and I recall during one of the extensions, there was a statement made, something very close to you by Mr. Mayor, that there will be no more extensions. And then you also said there was something very close to the effect of, "There's nothing else for council to do." That if they meet the deadline, fine. If they don't meet it, then the termination goes out, and that's it. And I've seen quotes from you, and whether they're correct or not, that say there will be no more extensions. So it's after 5:00, you know, this isn't a federal courthouse. It takes pleadings at midnight. I take it, it's over. And so I don't know whatever else there is that needs to be done. And I'm frankly kind of surprised it even needed to be on the agenda, but that's for you guys to explain, I guess. And it just sort of completes the story of what started out as the Chinese financed with bad steel allegedly. Then they backed out, and then it went to a, "Hey, we're going to have American financing." And at the end of the day, we're going to have American financing. Now we don't have to use the Chinese steel. And then it was a bond offering that Fitch, Moody's, and the S&amp;P wouldn't underwrite because it was junk. The paper was junk, and nobody believed that anything would be worth it, that this project would even finish. So there's a lot of smart people around the world that pulled out of this thing, not just in Virginia Beach. And by any reasonable, prudent person's way of looking at this, this can't be a good deal. There's not one shred of evidence that indicates that it is. And these are smart people that make these determinations outside of our smartness. So I would hope that you would honor your commitment, that there would be no other reason for you to extend this, that you would keep your word. I'm pretty sure I quoted you pretty close accurately. You can correct me if I'm wrong. I know you're not going to comment, but it's because I'm so compelling, I'm sure. But that's, at the end of the day, that's a fact, Mr. Mayor, and that's a fact to all of you. And anybody that doesn't live by that, well, then you're not being honest and accountable to the people that put you in those seats.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker.
Barbara Massner.
Barbara, we welcome you back.
I just want to ask, Ruth, did you mention why Ms. Abbott wasn't here?
Ma'am?
Did you mention why Ms. Abbott wasn't here today?
No, ma'am, I did not.
Ms. Abbott is out with the flu.
Okay. It's normally mentioned when someone isn't here. Okay. I'm glad other people spoke up. I totally disagree with Reed that any arena project should be reconsidered. Any public-private partnership using our money, we have 1.384 billion in unfunded liabilities. The potholes, as Mr. Hanson knows, they don't last because the sewage underneath is leaking and the patches don't work. You're directing the city manager to terminate the arena agreement. There is none, as spoken. And Andrea Kilmer's letter, August 14th, clearly asked for the 6th to be the deadline. I resent the hell, excuse my French, out of all of you not returning my email asking that you cancel this meeting tonight so I could spend the day at the polls, and not one of you responded. You canceled last year when you were running, Mr. Sessoms, and I resent it. Okay, I want air $50 million plus interest, or 78 million, whatever it is, returned to the taxpayers. Any new use of air money requires a supermajority 9-2 vote. And this has always been to fill hotel rooms in the dead of winter. They took out a PAC in 2012. I happened to be at the resort and conference center when they were there, to fund only tourism, people interested in helping the tourism industry. Our money isn't just for tourism. Many of you are funded by the hotel motel industry and the developers. Anybody that took money from Ballard, USM, ESG, Mid-Atlantic, whatever name it is, or financing in any way, they shouldn't even vote or speak on this. And Mr. Moss, I'd appreciate if everyone in the city who wants to see what you are posting and comment could do so. I think that's restricting access also. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other speakers?
Andrea Kilmer.
We welcome you tonight.
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, everyone on city council. We're pretty excited. We delivered today all the documents to the title clerk, as well as to the city attorney's office, for this closing. And I'm glad that it was brought up about smart people at the table. We have JP Morgan, the United States' largest bank, that is ready, willing, and able to close this evening with direction from the city. We've actually, while we've been sitting here getting emails, "How are we closing? Are we closing?" They are ready to do this project. We have met their requirements to bring to the table to close this evening. We need direction from the city council. We have AEG Facilities, which is the world's largest facilities owner, bringing the largest bank and the largest facilities owner to the table here for this closing. They are smart people. I won't say maybe I'm not. This has been a long four years. But anyway, as you will hear from my CFO tonight, we have worked diligently to be in compliance with the development agreement and bring this loan to the table. We are ready to spend over $250 million in this city and bring an arena to the city based upon that development agreement. I would hope that the city council would direct the city attorney to proceed to allow us to record this evening and to deliver these documents to the city clerk. I will be glad to answer anyone's specific questions. We have met the requirements of the development agreement and all the requirements that JP Morgan has asked us to do for us to literally record and close. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Valerie Wilkinson.
Valerie, we welcome you.
Thank you. Thank you. I am the CFO, Valerie Wilkinson, the CFO for Mid-Atlantic Arena. And as Andrea said, we have delivered our documents today. And I do want to share, I have been in continual communication with our lenders, headed up by JP Morgan Chase, including right up until the moment I walked in here. They are, they stand ready, willing, and able to close. They are very eager, not only about this project, but about the city and about being part of the vision of everything that is going to happen in the resort district. They've bought into the city in a big way, and they believe in this project in a big way. We have delivered to the city manager this afternoon, when we came down here, a letter from our CEO, Andrea Kilmer, saying that we are giving notice that pursuant to the development agreement dated December 11, 2015, that we have tendered the original signed recordable documents and all of the remaining signed documents to the city attorney and the necessary original signatures. Of the lenders are also with the title agent. Us and our lenders are ready, willing, and able to close the construction loan in full in accordance with the development agreement now. We look forward to bringing this state-of-the-art arena to Virginia Beach. We're very excited to have gotten to this moment, and we're excited about moving ahead to our next phase of this partnership.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other speakers?
That's all the speakers, your honor.
Mr. Moss, it's your motion. I'll let you make it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What's, I think, I know many of my friends, I can see out there, Ralph, Leslie, and Diane always thought I was nuts when I came out in favor and supported the arena. It's a project I still really do like, and I think the business model, if all the terms had been met, is still a sound project, which I would support in the future, should all those terms be met. But they also were correct, that we've been advised, and as of tonight, they have not been met. And so therefore, our only recourse in order to make sure that we are good stewards of the city's position, I move the adoption of the resolution.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? I would make a comment if I could. First of all, I want to thank all the people that have been involved with this project, from the developer to the staff of the city and to this council. I think this council has been a huge supporter of trying to make this happen. I'm still, I'm one of those guys, I'm optimistic. We still have a few more hours. And Mr. Jones and I had a conversation that Ms. Kilmer's aware of with AEG a few hours ago, and we made our requirement known pretty clearly. And I hope that they will move forward with what we requested. That being said, is there any other discussion? I'll call for the question, please.
By a vote of nine to one, you have adopted the resolution.
We now go to ordinances to appropriate to the school reversion fund, $19,258,877 to the fiscal year, 18 operating budget, and $900,000 to the fiscal year, 18 capital improvement program. This was all consent. Mr. Moss, you wanted to bring forward something?
Right. You may recall, two informal sessions back, I mentioned that I knew this was coming forward with regards to the reversion fund, and also with regards to the fact that after the budgets had been adopted, due to the actual real estate assessments that came in and other revenues, that the school board, under the funding formula, was receiving an additional $3,094,987 that they had not anticipated, nor did they have a requirement for when their budget was adopted. And I said, "I thought at the time, since that was revenue that they hadn't anticipated and didn't have a requirement for at the time, that while I thought that under the funding formula, we should honor that transfer..." formula, we should honor that transfer, I also thought there should be a debate on whether or not, and this discussion, if the amount of their under-execution of the prior year, which was $17,63,890, of which $11 million was under-executed salaries, that we should not look to see what the highest and best use, and I know everybody calls that, have a discussion, was in fact giving the school board $3 million, for which they never had a requirement for to start with. Now, because they think they have it, they invent things to spend it on, as governments tend to do, but rather, what might be higher city priorities? And I remember, Mr. Mayor, you said, "Well, maybe the school board has requirements for that money." Well, maybe. I also know that the city manager came back and expressed, in light of our lessons learned in Texas and in Florida, that we need to be increasing our reserve because of the huge demand those extreme weather events place on both residents, schools, and city facilities. So, when the school board adopted this, and we got this transmission, "This is what you get for $20 million. This is the explanation. You get one page." That's all, which I think is insufficient. I made a request, as the city manager knows, to get more information. I also requested they be here to explain it. I don't see them here tonight. So, my...
They are.
Oh, good. I hope they come up, and maybe we should have them come up and talk first, if they're here. That'd be great.
Who's here from the schools? Is it Farrell? Farrell, we welcome you. Farrell. Farrell. Farrell, I'm sorry. I got another one on my mind. We're glad to have you here, and I think Mr. Moss has some questions. This was on consent.
Yes. I went back and looked at your, you know, current CIP. Let's just talk with that $900,000 first, if you could. So, when you go and look at those pages, and that's, one of them was a ground improvement project, one of them had like $13 million appropriated to date, and another $1.25 million appropriated this year. Can you tell me of the total amount appropriated to date? How much is unexpended?
Mr. Moss, I don't have that information this evening.
Well, see, here's my point, Mr. Mayor, is they're asking for another $900,000 of this money to be appropriated, when we aren't even told how much that they already have is not appropriated, what the priorities for their expenditures are. I mean, I think this is at the table when it should not be here, because we are stewards of the public money. I realize the school board voted 12 to 0, but can you tell me the other CIP project? How much is unexpended?
Mr. Moss, I didn't come prepared with that kind of detail, but I would like to give a response, if I may.
Please.
The reversion resolution that the school board approved, and you have for you tonight, that's a normal part of the process that we follow every year at the end of the fiscal year. The $3 million is a part of the revenue sharing agreement, which basically says that if the revenue comes in in excess of the budget, that's the city's revenue in those revenue sharing streams, that those funds are, can be re-appropriated based on the percent the revenue sharing calls for. So, the school, that's $3 million we couldn't have anticipated. We don't know what that money's going to be when we build a budget, and the city doesn't know what that revenue excess is going to be until the year-end, the fiscal year-end. We're just being fiscally responsible.
Do you think you have first right to other people's money that earn it? Do you think that's true?
You know, John, I'm going to... No, John, we've got to be respectful.
I know, but he's making a claim that...
Wait, John. You know, all I'm asking, you know, I think this gentleman does a super job over the schools, handling the finances for a number of years. I would just ask the respect part. That's all I'm saying. I wouldn't...
I respect what they do, but the position being taken is that there's entitlement to the $3 million, and I don't think that's true. And that's the point I am making.
But does not the formula make that true? And maybe you could be wrong?
No, but here's, if you look at my resolution, it takes that into account. I'm willing to give them the $3 million from the funding formula. I'm saying deduct that amount off the reversion funds, which they are not entitled to. That is, that... And let me go back and talk about why that's the case. My point here is, when we're appropriating the...
Do you have any more questions?
No, I do not.
Okay.
He doesn't have the answer.
I actually had a question.
What?
For Farrell.
Farrell, we got another question. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. You got me on Farrell.
It's my fault.
Obviously, when you built your budget, it was on the expected revenues that you were going to get from the funding formula.
Yes, ma'am.
Correct. And always, I mean, I served on the school board, there's always huge needs that you would have loved to have had in that budget, but you didn't, because you wanted to stay in the constraint of the agreement of the funding formula.
That is correct.
So, this extra money will get, it's not like it's going to be wasted.
But good use.
There's a whole list of over $70, $80 million of unmet needs that aren't a part of this. The $19 million or $20 million in this resolution reflects some of those critical needs that we have, including replacing aged school buses and those kind of things.
Well, and the school bus issue, we got behind in replacing school buses back when Dr. Fawcett was at the helm, and we have never caught up with the replacement. The replacement of the school buses should actually be in the budget, but we've never been able to catch up with that.
That's correct. And I'd like to make one, and I'll finish up with this. Mr. Moss, when you talk about unexpended funds, our operating budget is over $750 million. As the CFO, I'm not going to be fiscally responsible if I try to spend that budget down to zero. Since 2009 and '10, our reversion funds, as a portion of the full appropriated budget from the city, ranges from a high, a low of 1.7% to a high of 2.58%. This $17 million portion for this past year is 2.21%. I think that's being very fiscally responsible with the public funds.
I'd like to just have you floor back, please. The Federal Reserve has told us that the average family can't even come up with $400 cash at the end of the month, so I'm sure they have cars that they like to have replaced and homes that they like to maintain, and they don't have a 2.5% cash reserve of their salary in the bank. But let's go back to 1415, when the ending reversion fund was $12.3 million. In 1516, that budget, which is the one before the, was $16.8 million. And the year that just ended was $17 million. In each and every one of those years, the principal contributor to those outstanding is under-executed payroll. So, we are over-budgeting personnel costs on a consistent, regular basis that is predictable, and therefore, that's excess taxation. But getting back to my resolution that I proposed, so that people can understand, I'm not saying take the money somewhere else. I'm saying put that money into the, that they call their special reserve fund of $13,406, and make them have to provide a better justification relative to the resources that they already have and are likely under-executing before we put in all that money to the expenditures that they mentioned, because the justification in the context of their total budget was not provided. I'm not saying those aren't needed. I'm just saying the justification of a one-page document is an adequate justification to appropriate for those purposes, so I'm not penalizing the money. Now, for the part that is in excess of what they could have anticipated, and I have no doubt that every family, every government, every business, if more revenue comes in, can find things to spend it on and probably has unmet needs. The city has unmet needs. We have unmet needs in our reserve account. So, I'm saying is that of that $3 million, that that would go into the general fund for the purposes of helping us deal with additional reserve for extreme weather events, which the school system would directly benefit from, should we suffer an extreme weather event. So, I don't think here anyone's not recognizing, in this ordinance, I'm proposing, that the schools don't have legitimate needs, or they're not good stewards of the money. They meet the full spectrum of all our students at half the price of private schools, so they should be applauded. But at the same time, I think we have a responsibility to know that these expenses, when they have other money, and their CIP in other places, that hasn't been expended, do we really know that the priority for that $3 million is highest for schools, or do we have a higher use? And having that public discussion. Now, let's go back a little bit about history, because how did we get here? This council increased real estate taxes, increased real estate taxes to raise $6.5 million for full-day kindergarten, when in fact, the execution in this year's budget requires no more than $2 million to implement the full-day kindergarten. So, they have about a $4.5 million thing that had nothing to do with what they requested it for. If we had known, I would like to think this council would have known they had $3 million more dollars coming in, we might have increased a lower real estate tax rate. Gets back to my point, Mr. Mayor, about whose money is it first? I'm just proposing that the, rather than appropriating this $9.9 million for all these projects, for which there was no justification provided, other than just one page, that though all those dollars go into the schools' reserve special revenue fund, meaning they just have to come back and tell us why they have to have that, and, but the athletics funds, which goes back, they would get those dollars, because that's an enterprise fund that they do, and that that $3.6 million, which was the extra part, we would reduce the reversion funds and would go into a general fund to help us deal with extreme weather events. I realize this may not be supported, but I think that just because people think business as usual, well, I think we have to be rethinking when we're looking at the huge drainage issues and some huge bills we have. I think business as usable is hard to afford, but I'm not taking their school funding formula money. I'm just reducing the reversion funds and putting the balance in the special reserve fund for them to come back and actually justify the reasons for the expense.
Is that a motion?
It is.
Do I have a second? Hearing none of the motion, let's not get on. Is there a speaker? I got you coming up.
Yes, Your Honor, I have Reed Grenham.
Okay, Reed. We welcome you back, Sora.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. I've been spending a lot of time at the school board lately, and I've been learning a lot about it. Diana Howard and I spent an entire Saturday going through the CIP and reading the details about all of this. And basically, these CIP funds that they're transferring the money to are slush funds. I then called about the $900,000 that you raised our taxes for, that was supposed to be for full-day kindergarten, and eventually was hooked up with Mr. Farrell, and I asked him, "What are you going to spend the money on in the White Fleet?" And he laughed and said, "Well, we don't actually have a list of vehicles. That's not how that works. I've got vehicles that have over 100,000 miles, and when I get the money, I go look at what I think I might need to do, and then I spend the money on that." Then I went in the CIP fund, and Diana and I looked through it, and there was already, you know, $1.7 million this year in those accounts. And what are the accounts for? Landscaping on fields, undefined technology, and for just unspecified improvements anywhere, but no specific items in those CIP funds. As a taxpayer, I'm kind of incensed about this. You raised my real estate taxes for full-day kindergarten. They didn't execute full-day kindergarten. They didn't even need a tax increase to pay for the first year. You turn around and do it, now they come back to you and say, "Well, we have all this extra money, let's just go spend it." We have higher priorities, and what Mr. Moss said is true. You should take that money back, Mr. Hanson, and apply it to reducing the flooding problems we have. That's higher priority than a slush fund for landscaping somewhere in an unspecified place in the city. You know, I agree we need new school buses. I looked into that matter, and he'll tell you that we do. But you don't need to raise taxes for that when they got a $17 million surplus at the end of the year, or the money they didn't need in the first place. And it's kind of outrageous that they come to you with a one-page thing, and I spent more time with Diana going over all the details to understand the matter, and they didn't have the courtesy to explain it to you. You should be as upset as I am. You should be as upset as Mr. Moss is. And as your fiduciary responsibility to me, the taxpayer, taking money out of my pocket, you guys, it's your money. It should go in the general fund, and you should spend it on a higher priority item than a general slush fund for the school to squander on whatever. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to make a comment?
Yeah, just a quick comment, Mayor. So, I'm saying, and, you know, John, we have the same conversation about job vacancies, and, you know, we will have to disagree. I think it's a wise fiscal practice. I think it's served us very well. As far as higher priorities, there is no higher priorities than our children. You look at our public school system, we have 100% accreditation across the city. That's something that we should all be very, very proud of, and I commend the school system for achieving that ratio. And I would just like to say that I think that Mr. Farrell has a very wise, improving track record, and if it ain't broke, don't fix it.
Thank you. Before I ask for a motion, first of all, may I have a motion? Do I have a motion?
I move to approve.
Have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
The school reversion fund.
Second. I do have one comment, and, John, you did say something that I'm going to say again. You know, the schools do a great job, basically doing the job at half the cost of a private school. That is your quote. And I think we also must be fair, that, yes, we do have excess funds on the school side at the end of the year and on the city side at the end of the year, and those monies go into the next year's budget. And we know how those dollars get there, you know, salaries on both sides. Those funds have been very helpful to the city over the years, especially with recent hurricanes and things like that, to cover expenses until we get reimbursed from FEMA and so forth. It's a philosophy difference that we have, because, again, if we put it in next year in the budget, I mean, excuse me, if we put all of it in, as you know, the next year it won't be there.
Well, in this particular case, I'm not addressing the structural change, so that is a philosophical difference.
Right.
Because these were going to one-time expenses. I'm capturing one-time revenues that would not affect next year's budget, because that would go into the formula to pay those salaries. This is a, taking a one-time, unanticipated revenue gain that they didn't need to balance their budget, and putting it in to increase our reserves. So, it isn't impacting the ability to deliver quality education services. It isn't structurally changing out-year revenue flows. It's capturing a one-time, unanticipated revenue gain by getting a bonus, and rather than spending it, you invest in the stock market, I'm investing that one-time bonus money that no one knew they had, and putting it in a place where you need for a rainy day. And that's all this does.
That's right, but, again, we come back and we use a term called a slush fund.
I never use that term.
But that's a very inappropriate term. The schools have a lot of very important needs, which we agree on.
We do.
These funds are being used towards these important needs.
I'm not certain of that.
Well, I believe they are, and as such, you know, they have a fiduciary responsibility as well. And I applaud what they've done in recent years with, you know, if you think back about our history, we used to could fund a school, and that was part of what we did with the excess funds, and you served on the council when we did that. We would take those monies and fund an elementary school, because they were so great back then.
I've been, like I said, the times have changed. You have to rethink your business model.
I hear you, but, anyway, we'll call for the question, please.
By a vote of 10 to 1, excuse me, 9 to 1, you have approved the ordinance as in the agenda.
Okay, I think I'm finally getting to planning, ladies and gentlemen. Does that go along with what you all are at? Okay, the first one is the Grace Bible Church of Virginia Beach. This was on consent, and I believe there's one speaker on that?
Yes, Your Honor. Well, I have more than one.
Okay.
Mr. Vedan.
Mr. Vedan, I'm going to let the, are the people in opposition?
Yeah, I was going to say, there are a number of people signed up to speak in favor. I think there's...
There's some undecided.
No, Cuba's in favor now.
And one, oh, she, and one opposition.
We'll hear the opposition.
Mr. Mayor, I don't, I don't think that's right.
Well, I'm going to make that call this time, if I could.
Well, I mean, we're setting a very bad precedent, and I'll have to think about making, next time, making a motion to overturn that ruling. I think it's a bad precedent.
Okay, thank you. We'll hear from the opposition first, please.
Benjamin Schweiger.
We welcome you today, Sora.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I just wanted to...
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I just wanted to come up here and say that I am opposed to this rezoning, regardless of what they've changed throughout this. This lawyer is going to get up here and speak to you for 10 minutes while only have three to convince you of how amazing this is and what an awesome thing this is going to be. I back up to this property, right on the bottom corner, basically the arrowhead itself. I'm going to back up to this two-story church. They're going to provide me a six-foot fence to basically block their two stories that I have of a monolithic building that looks like a car dealership, but not a place of worship. This is one of those things, he's going to sell you a sob story about how this is penalizing the owner of the property, and while I feel for them, and that they did not sell this property previously, I don't feel like it should penalize the neighbors that live there. There's just, there's many things that have gone into this. It's been in, this is the second month, it got removed from you guys' docket, now it's back up magically again. So here we are. It's just I've been around robbing with this church itself, and I just want to let you guys know I was opposed to it.
Thank you very much.
Could you point out on the map specifically where your, if you could walk over there and just point out where your place is on that map, please?
My house backs up right here, so basically I have a straight-line shot.
All right, thank you very much.
Along with five other neighbors that could be.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Burdon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the church are here, and there are other folks who are here to speak in favor, so I'll be very brief. This is not a rezoning. All this is is the conditional use permit for the church. The church is well back from the property line. There are lands, there is landscaping provided. In other words, the church is, I guess this isn't working, the church is well, well, I mean, we're talking this to scale, we're close to, close to 100 feet away from the, where this gentleman lives. There's, there's already existing vegetation that will remain. There's parking lots, and theirs are also being screened, and the parking lot will be, isn't being elevated in any way, shape, or form. It's agriculturally zoned property, will remain agriculturally zoned property. This is not a rezoning. That part has been withdrawn, was withdrawn over a month ago. This is a property that's in the high-noise zone, cannot be developed residentially, which is what he was alluding to. The Smiths, and I won't go into all the details, it's all in the transcript from the planning commission. But at planning commission, we had to keep the two together for contractual reasons. The church and Mrs. Smith have revised their deal, and there is no rezoning. It's all agricultural zone property. It's a use permit for a church with one entrance. The church will maintain all of the property. The conditions are all acceptable. And there are some people who were opposed to the rezoning of the front of the property who've come tonight, you know, to thank the church and are appreciative. And we were told at planning commission that the only opposition was to the commercial rezoning on the street, and that's not in the play anymore. It's been withdrawn, was withdrawn over a month ago.
Thank you.
Of course, Mr. Burdon, if I could.
Yes, yes.
Thank you so much. The distance between, I know the fence goes across, and then there's that triangle. What is the distance between the fence and the property line of the gentleman who spoke?
These folks have fences. We're all, we're doing is landscaping to cover, to shield the parking lot. But the folks here, I assume these folks are here, the building is way up here.
And so I'm asking, the, between the line that goes across to make the triangle and the other angles, what's that linear distance there? Do you know approximately? Not holding you to a specific number, but is that like?
Here, all the way across.
No, all, from top, from the line across down to the point, going the other way, going that way, that way, yes. Is that like, I'm not trying to hold you, it's just approximately 50 feet?
I believe it's, it is on probably 200, I'm guessing, you know, maybe 175, 200.
Okay, great, I can visualize that, because I'm.
Because it's a, this is a huge site.
I've been at it, I just couldn't, couldn't see. All right, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
She certainly has a question. Yes. The, the condition says that when the church is developed, it would be in conformance with this submitted site layout exhibit.
Yes, ma'am.
Which is that, is that. And I know in the past, I have kind of relied on existing vegetation remaining, and it goes away. We don't have it as a condition. Well, it is a condition in that it's shown on the site plan that this vegetation will remain.
Ms. Henley, any way you want, if you want to add that as a condition? We have no intention of going back here in that triangular area and removing any vegetation that is on the property. We have no reason to. It's well away from where we're developing.
Right. So not only down here in this triangular part, but in the other area above that, with all of that that's shown as wetlands, that's all going to stay.
That is, yes, ma'am. All that area to the, to the west is, is wet and is not going to be touched.
Maybe Mr. Frankenfield can tell me if you think that we are covered well enough, and Mr. Kemp and whoever else, by, by saying that they must conform with this, this layout, or do we need more specific language that will keep that vegetation there, the existing vegetation?
Well, you're better off if you want to put more language in, but I'm, we're satisfied that it's okay, but if you want to add more language.
And in all of these papers, I, we'll use the mayor's copy, that we add the, the condition that the parking lot must be at grade with the adjoining property, and that would avoid exist, or any more elevated parking lots. But I guess it could bury just a tiny bit somewhere in there because.
I would just, I don't, we don't intend to elevate the parking lot. So I'm, I'm told by our engineer, who doesn't know all the elevations of the adjacent properties, that we will not be raising our parking lot. There's, it'll be leveled, because it's not, but we're not elevating it at all. I don't want anything to imply that we're going to raise it if we are lower than somebody adjacent to us.
That's what I think has sort of come to my attention here, so that, well, the parking lot itself will be at grade.
At current grade, subject, subject, subject to needing to, you know.
At current grade, okay. We can, we can make that, say the parking lot must be at the current grade of a property.
Fine, everybody understands that, that still has to be leveled, so little bits will come up and little bits may go down.
Elevated parking lots. And then, just to make certain, the existing vegetation shown on the, the site plan will remain.
Subject to, let me point this one thing out. Notice in this, this area here, and not so much here, you know, there may be some vegetation. I don't know where the, the trunks of the trees are, but I, I don't expect there'll be anything removed there, but I can't, because we don't have a tree survey, other than, other than in that, that, those two pinch points. That's, that's, that condition is perfectly acceptable.
I'm looking at, Mr. Frankenfield, does that, does that work for those folks who will be reviewing this at, at the time when it's approved?
The church has no desire to remove any vegetation unless it interferes with the grading of the parking lot. So I don't think there's.
This assures that except for, at those two, as you call them, pinch points, the, all of this parking lot is going to be well away from the existing residential area.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Henley, would you restate that last condition so we can be sure we have it correct? I have the existing vegetation on the site plan will remain. Is that all you need?
Yes. Okay, okay. That's so we're not going to be surprised one day to find out it was all taken down. Okay.
Other speakers?
I have other speakers, but I believe they're in favor. They want to speak, okay. Terry Davenstein.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
We welcome you.
Thank you. And rest of City Council. I'm a little confused about my notes now. I was not aware that the front six acres was not included in this project. I'd like for you to know.
Right, that stays agricultural.
It stays belonging to Mrs. Smith.
Right.
The churches aren't buying the front six acres.
Right. However, the church is going to maintain that property, so it's.
Am I confused that that wasn't originally part of the plan? Am I confused?
They withdrew the application to rezone those front six acres to commercial shop.
And that was the church's application, or is that Mrs. Smith's application? Just out of curiosity.
The only thing that's being approved now is the church, the conditional use permit for the church.
But the contract changed, correct me if I'm wrong, they're not buying the whole 20 acres anymore. Now they're only buying the back part where they're putting the church, and the front six acres will remain, belongs to Mrs. Smith.
Remain in the ownership with Miss Smith.
Okay, thank you. But that didn't need to go through planning commission again?
No, because it was withdrawn.
Was pretty.
It's old agriculture. Nothing's changing.
Okay, thank you. My name's Terry Lavenstein. I live at 2324 London Bridge Road, directly across from the property, Fox Ridge Farm. I've lived there for over 34 years. I'm speaking in support of Grace Bible Church's, Church's application for a conditional use permit to build their church at 2285 London Bridge Road, the Fox Ridge Farm property. It's my understanding that the city code permits, conditional use permits for religious use on agriculturally zoned land, and I feel, I'm speaking for many others in my neighborhood that weren't able to attend tonight, I feel that that's a very good use for that agricultural land. I feel it fits with our community, and I think that's a great idea. Throughout the process of Grace Bible Church showing interest in purchasing Fox Ridge Farm, I have voiced my concerns and the concerns of many in the surrounding community. This evening, I've not come to change my opinion, but rather to continue my voice of concerns for the safety of our community. I am so pleased that Grace Bible Church has decided against rezoning the front of the property. I thought it was them that was doing it. It's important that Grace Bible Church begins their journey in our community, that they continue to consider not only the best interest for the church, but the best interest for their neighbors as well. As a neighbor that has seen many accidents in the curve, that deadly curve, over the number of years, I would ask that the city and Grace Bible Church, or somebody, consider that having a, some sort of a parking, a traffic person out in the front of the property to help with traffic ingress and egress during their larger events. And again, I just want to thank you so much, and I want to thank Grace Bible Church, welcome them to our community, and I just want to thank you for considering that the rezoning, and I'll continue to fight any rezoning of that six acres, just so everyone's aware.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other speakers?
Robert Goodman.
We welcome you, sir.
Mayor Sessoms, Councilwoman Henley, members of the City Council. I am Robert L. Goodman, and I live in the Princess Anne Hunn Club community. Our community supports the acquisition of this property by Grace Bible Church and the conditional use permit for their church facility. We thank them for taking into consideration the desires of our community and the surrounding communities to maintain the agricultural, rural nature of our communities by withdrawing their request to rezone part of the property to B2 as originally requested. We do, however, feel it would be in the best interest of all parties that a comprehensive study by the city traffic experts be conducted to ensure the minimal impact on the flow of traffic along this corridor of London Bridge Road, that takes into account the limited access to the property, the limited areas where vehicles can make turns or U-turns as necessary, and the proposed use of the facility throughout the year, to keep with the intent of the master plan that London Bridge Road act as an efficient traffic corridor from General Booth to Dam Neck Road. Having experience in making right and left-hand turns into and out of my community over the past 24 years, the potential impact of 300 vehicles making turns into and out of their property could have a significant impact on the flow of traffic. Prior planning in this case would help to avoid or eliminate problems in the future. We would also like to request Grace Bible Church offer their proposed start and completion dates for the construction of this facility. We look forward to welcoming Grace Bible Church and becoming a member of our communities. This week, as we exercised our constitutional rights in electing our officials and celebrating Veterans Day, as a veteran, I thank the mayor and City Council for the opportunity to appear before the City Council and to speak on this issue. Thank you.
We thank you for coming down. Thank you. Any other speakers?
It's all the speakers, Your Honor.
Mrs. Henley.
Well, I really appreciate the input from the neighborhood on this issue as it's gone through the process, and I really appreciate the property owner being willing to change the application. We had hoped that it could be permanently resolved. We did our best to try to convince the Navy that maybe it would be a good idea for them to purchase or an easement over this property, because of course, the, the real fly and the ointment here is the fact that it's in the very high-noise zone and therefore cannot be built as residential, which would be in compliance with the rest of the neighborhood. But at any rate, the best we could do, and I think the property owner is, is being very gracious in withdrawing that application for the commercial at the front, leaving it agricultural. But of course, it's, it's, who knows what might happen sometime in the future. But at least, at this time, there's just one access from London Bridge Road, and we do have the analysis of the traffic impacts here. And I'm sure that this will be what is followed as it goes through the site plan review. I also appreciate the fact that they are going to keep the, the site near the residential to, as a very minimal impact, and I think that this is probably the best we can do at this particular point, and I really appreciate the, the work that's been done by Mrs. Smith's attorney, as well as the Grace Bible Church attorney, in accommodating all of this in the meantime. So with those two additions to the conditions, I move approval of the conditional use permit.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Is there any discussion? I'll call for the question, please.
By a vote of 10 to 0, you have approved the application with the added two conditions for a parking and landscaping.
Our final planning item is SXCW Properties 2 LLC in Fulton Bank, N.A. We will do this one the right way, John. So we welcome you. You have up to 10 minutes, sir. We watch the meeting for just a second.
Now, before we start the clock, I want to thank the council, and most particularly Mrs. Henley, on behalf of Mrs. Smith and Grace Bible for all the efforts that you all made, and you especially, to try to find a, a resolution to that circumstance that you described. And we do appreciate everybody's efforts in that regard. All right. Start the clock. Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, for the record, I'm Eddie Burdon of Virginia Beach Attorney, and it is my pleasure to come before the council this evening on behalf of Sam's Real Estate headquartered in Charlotte, North Carolina, to seek your approval of a conditional use permit for a state-of-the-art automated car wash and gasoline sales on a four-and-one-half acre parcel, which is zoned straight B2, that is unconditional B2 Community Business District. My client has flown up here this evening, along with a number of members of his staff, including his corporate counsel, Jamie Hall, and Ms. Hall will have a short presentation to council when I'm finished. The subject parcel is on the east side of Holland Road at its signalized intersection with Warwick Drive. The parcel is directly across Warwick Drive from a new 10-acre commercial center, Amstel Square, that is anchored by a 36,000-square-foot Lidl grocery store. It has an approved site plan for 63,700 square feet of retail space and three additional out parcels, one of which will have a Hardee's with a drive-through, one is a tire center. There's also a use permit that's been approved for a repair garage on one of the buildings on the site. The center is a by-right development on property that was zoned unconditional B2 over 40 years ago. In the handouts that I provided everybody, I provided everybody two handouts. There's a smaller three-page handout that includes a copy of the site plan for that development on the third page. The first and second page show that site plan and two by-right development options for the subject property. It's shown in an aerial, showing the proximity to the community, and two by-right options for the four-and-a-half acre, and what is happening, what is under development on the Amstel Square property. Now, the third page is the one that has the full site plan just for Amstel Square, and on that I have highlighted the proximity of the backs of the retail businesses and the delivery areas behind some of those buildings on, to both Old Clubhouse Road, behind the Lidl, and to the residences at Scarborough Square. You will notice that there are drive aisles behind those buildings with, in a couple of cases, dumpsters, and there's only. of cases, dumpsters, and there's only a fifteen-foot, fifteen-foot buffer between the drive aisles and the back of the lots, because that's what's required, it's always required in a buy-right development. And the Lidl is thirty-five feet off of Old Clubhouse with no landscaping behind it, because they're not required to have landscaping behind it. As I previously pointed out, the four-and-a-half acres that my client has requested this conditional use permit, or these conditional use permits on, is also zoned B2 and has been for many decades. And you'll see in those plans, if you look at the first two sheets, how they can be developed with parking and entrances, and really, you know, no buffers other than fifteen feet, and actually, the parking lot, it's only five feet, there's no buffer. This subject property is located in the seventy to seventy-five dB DNL noise zone, a little bit in APZ two around NES Oceana, and as such, it cannot possibly be rezoned for any type of residential use. Now, the second handout includes our plan and a number of other exhibits. The first two pages, the first is our plan, and superimposed on the aerial photo with the property of the Amstel Square across Warwick. The second is just our plan. Now, if this application is approved, the development will be mandated to adhere to this plan. With this plan, the only accesses to the property are via a right-in-and-right-out with a turn lane from Holland Road and from Warwick Drive directly across from the entrance to the Lidl and the Amstel Square Center. Our plan has a five tank, five fueling position Exxon fuel pumps up at the corner, under a very attractive canopy, in an all-automated Exxon car wash, and that is, the employees of Sam's will be policing and monitoring the site and will be in charge of the site, but there is no kiosk, there is no convenience store, there is absolutely no retail utilization associated with the gasoline sales or with the car wash. Nobody's selling cigarettes, beer, soft drinks, you name it, coffee, none of the above. Directly adjacent to the Exxon gas is a Sam's enclosed automated car wash. It is an attractive brick building, you have elevations, your staff has seen, modern architecture, red brick, and the red brick was a request of one of the planning commissioners, they changed the brick color at their request. My clients volunteered, ladies and gentlemen, volunteered at the beginning to construct an eight-foot-high brick screen wall, parallel to our property's two-hundred-and-fifty linear feet of frontage on Old Clubhouse Road, set back ninety feet from the curb, and at the same time, they agreed to plant and maintain fifty evergreen trees at five and six feet in height at planting in a double row on the community side of that fence along the wall. This creates an eighteen thousand seven hundred-plus-square-foot pocket park at the entrance to the community. And my clients also agreed to do extensive streetfront landscaping in excess of what's required by right on a by-right development along Old Clubhouse Road, Warwick Drive, and Holland Road. My client has also agreed to construct a brand-new brick community entrance sign for Scarborough Square adjacent to the wooden, excuse me, the brick wall, and this will create a sense of arrival into the neighborhood, into leaving the commercial area and coming into the neighborhood. The Lidl, by contrast, is only thirty-five feet back, so the Lidl will still be to the right with about thirty-five feet of grass behind it. We're talking about ninety feet, and we're talking about a very substantial buffer, and really a park that my client will be maintaining. Most critically, my clients have agreed to limit their hours of operation of their businesses to seven AM to nine PM. Stated another way, the car wash and gas sales and any other use on this property on the park in the back corner will be closed from nine PM in the evening until seven in the morning every day. My clients have also agreed to plant a fifteen-wide, fifteen-foot-wide landscape buffer and supplement the existing landscaping and trees that exist behind the townhomes that adjoin us in the upper northeast corner of the site. In addition to that, they've agreed to dedicate a forty-five-foot-wide no-build zone, triple the required buffer on B2 for any commercial development. In that area, there will be no development. We'd plant more trees, but there is some concern with visibility and security, and we've worked with staff in what they want for the landscaping. Sam's has also agreed to exclude possible incompatible uses from that part of the property with a list of thirteen incompatible uses that will not be allowed, potentially incompatible. Most likely, that property, because of the access coming through the car wash and because of lack of visibility, the use is probably going to be an office building, possibly a small amount of specialty retail, but there won't be any eating or drinking establishments with drive-thrus, there won't be any convenience stores, no bars, no alcohol-related uses whatsoever, and nothing open after nine PM. From my client's initial communication with me, and at all times after, they have been steadfast in their desire to be a, not just a good neighbor, a great neighbor, and a good corporate citizen in our city, as they are in North and South Carolinas, in markets that they're in and in markets that they're expanding into, including Charlotte, Raleigh, Wake Forest, Cary, and others. The, an example of this is, we had a meeting that we scheduled, couldn't get a civic league meeting, so we scheduled, I went door-to-door, and we had a meeting about five weeks ago, pretty well attended, and one of the suggestions from one of the neighbors who has the unfortunate circumstance of living behind the Amstel Square Center and wished that he, and said so, wished that they had this type of buffer and that there was a use permit involved with that, but he suggested electric vehicle charging station, something that this area could use, and my client stepped up, said, "That's a great idea, and that's on this plan as well." This plan also ensures that there's absolutely no development whatsoever in the CBPA buffer, both the hundred-foot and the variable width. Now, traffic is the last thing I'll address, as your staff has indicated, the traffic numbers versus by right versus this, we're a thousand cars less per day, and our number in their report is based on a gasoline with convenience store and car wash. There is no-
Thank you very much, Mr. Burdon. You've run out of time. Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
I submit to the council that this application and what my clients have volunteered to do and agreed to do is certainly overwhelming and incontrovertible proof that they will be a great neighbor and a great citizen.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Jamie Hall.
We welcome you tonight.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of City Council. As, as you know, my name is Jamie Hall, I'm corporate counsel for Sam's Express, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you this evening about this project. Sam's Express Car Wash is a privately-held company headquartered in Matthews, North Carolina, just outside of Charlotte. We opened our first car wash in December of two thousand twelve in Fort Mill, South Carolina. Since that time, we've opened sixteen more locations throughout North and South Carolina and have been voted best car wash in each municipality in which we've opened. Our mission is to provide our customers with the best possible car wash experience by providing a top-notch facility and competitive pricing. Our car washes are eco-friendly, we recycle one hundred percent of all the water we use and ninety percent of all the recycled water we use, which results in about twelve million gallons of fresh water saved for the municipality each year. All of our chemicals are environmentally friendly and biodegradable, and we use state-of-the-art equipment, which allows our car wash to operate quietly and energy efficiently. Our buildings are attractive additions to any streetscape. As we enter a new market in Virginia and introduce our company to a new community and customer base, we, our goal is to be a first-class business and neighbor and active participant in the community. Some of our community projects and partnerships include Adopt a Stream, Susan G. Coman Foundation, and St. Jude's Children's Research Hospital, just to name a few. We have an in-house fundraising coordinator who is dedicated to assisting schools, churches, and other nonprofit organizations with fundraising initiatives, and we are family-friendly, so our staff and Sam the Bear mascot are frequently spotted at community events. In addition to the site we're discussing this evening, we have plans to develop a total of ten locations in the eastern Virginia marketplace. Each of our sites employs approximately twenty-five people. We pride ourselves on investing in our employees by providing them with professional training and advancement opportunities. I do want to update the council and let you know that we did purchase this property on Friday, November third, so we're officially the owner. We understand the property has an unconditional general commercial zoning designation. We moved forward with the purchase of the property prior to tonight's hearing, both to demonstrate our enthusiasm for this market and also to comply with the obligations under our purchase contract. In summary, we are committed to being a positive presence in this community and a friendly, clean, and professional alternative to traditional car washes, and we sincerely hope that City Council will see fit to give us this opportunity.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming down.
I have a question if-
Kevin Martin-Gale.
Excuse me, Shannon, I'm sorry.
Hi, I'm Shannon. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. Thank you for coming up tonight.
Sure.
Quick question for you, I had, if this doesn't get passed tonight, and you are the outright owner of the property now, what is your Plan B option, or what would you hypothesize seeing on that property-
Sure, so-
As a by-right option, that you wouldn't have to come to us to get approved?
Sure. So throughout the process, given our positive reception from planning staff and the planning commission, we've made every effort to make this a great project and address the concerns of neighbors, so our foremost hope is that it will be approved this evening. That being said, we have bought the property, as I mentioned, so if it's not the wish of council that we develop this property as a Sam's Express Car Wash, we would develop it by right, which would most likely be a fast-food restaurant, which in our opinion is a much less desirable use of the property for the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Kevin Martin-Gale. Your Honor, he's an attorney for the opposition. Do we give ten minutes?
If he's representing a group, he keeps all the people from, oh, yeah. Kevin, we welcome you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. My name's Kevin Martin-Gale with Bishop, Martin-Gale, Virginia Beach, and I do represent a group of concerned citizens who live in close proximity to this proposed project. And if I may, I'd like to first, before I forget, have them stand up so you can see the representatives here who are opposed to this.
No, you still.
Thank you. As I, as I stand here before you, to quote Yogi Berra, it's like deja vu all over again. In two thousand seven, ten years ago, I was in front of six of the eleven of you, where Mr. Burdon was here on behalf of RaceCo with a pretty similar project on the same piece of property, and I was here for a group of many of the same people who have once again found themselves having to get an attorney involved to try to convince you that this is a bad idea on this particular piece of property. And I would like to tell you the only thing that has changed that makes this one more attractive. They took out the convenience store aspect. Last one was a gas station and a car wash, and the only difference is that it included a convenience store. Well, what's happened in the last ten years? Let's be real honest about this. The traffic has gotten worse, there have been no improvements to the roads, and now we have a large Lidl that opened right across the street, as well as some other businesses. This is not better, it's worse. And this idea that this company is going to come in and open some kind of by-right business that's going to generate more traffic is nonsense. I'd love to see the example of where, since they opened in two thousand twelve, they've done that. That's a threat, and I hope you don't like it. I can assure you that the people I represent don't like it, they resent it. But what's interesting is, it's nonsense, because we know that if something along those lines was a good idea, it would have happened in the last decade when nothing has been built there. It's not competitive to build the kind of thing they're talking about. If one of these by-right operations could come in and be a success, it would have already happened in the more than a decade that that property has sat empty, but in particular in the last decade. And the reason I say that is because I recall the same things being said ten years ago. Mr. Burdon stood up here and told you how wonderful RaceCo is, and how it's great, and it's compatible, and he talked about how all this stuff could be built by right, and that would generate more traffic, and all the same things, all the same points got made. And here we are, ten years later, after it was defeated eleven to nothing last time, and there is not a sufficient reason for you to change your vote this time around. Now, in addition to the fact that we've got all these folks here who are your constituents, that you all represent, because they, you all run at-large across the city for voting purposes, so you all have to make an independent judgment in this for yourselves and satisfy yourself in this, in addition to the fact that we've got history on our side, that the last one was shot down ten years ago, they've also come with even more petition signatures than they had ten years ago. Ten years ago, they had about three hundred, now they have more, and they're prepared to hand up those to you tonight. Now, you've heard a lot about other possible uses. Let's look at what some other possible uses are. Every time we have one of these discussions, you hear about by right, well, you could have a bar, you could have a Hardee's, you could have a convenience store. You could also, if you let the market work the way it's supposed to, you could have animal hospitals, bakeries, business studios, offices, clinics, daycare, childcare, beauty shops, similar personal service establishments, financial institutions, florists, gift shops, stationary stores, greenhouses, plant nurseries, dry cleaners, medical and dental offices, and religious uses that occupy less than four thousand square feet, none of which are objectionable to these neighbors. All those are fine, because all those generate less traffic, less noise, and a far lower threat of crime. Ten years ago, you got information from the police department where you were advised that commercial developments will have a higher crime rate, the non-commercial developments, and a location was studied ten years ago and was reviewed for the prior year, and they had sixty-six crimes committed that year, the majority of which were simple larceny. However, armed robberies, assault, and carjackings were also committed. And this is a quote, "There are some unfortunate dynamics occurring on Holland Road at the present time." I don't know if there has been an updated study in the last ten years, but I think that the folks I represent will stand up and tell you that things have not improved, and that adding yet another car wash to an area that's got several of these in close proximity to each other is not a good idea. In fact, we know from ten years ago, you had two car washes located within four-tenths of a mile. They're still there. If this application's approved, you'll now have three packed within four-tenths of a mile. Think about that. Three car washes within four-tenths of a mile, and within a half-mile, you've got three gasoline stations on one corner. So now, we're going to have four, all located within a half-mile. What is the point of a conditional use permit if we're not going to make an applicant prove that there is a real need? And what is the point of having a conditional use permit process when it's right up against a residential area, if you're not going to make sure that this is not going to have a negative impact on the area? According to the comprehensive plan, the overriding objective of the policies that are set forth in your comprehensive plan are to protect a predominantly suburban character, which is defined in large measure by the stable neighborhoods of the primary residential area. If you look on a map, this doesn't make sense, the way that it backs right up against this huge neighborhood with a lot of current traffic problems, with a car spot located right next to it. This doesn't make sense. They're trying to slam a square peg into a round hole, and it's up to each one of you to ask yourself, are you genuinely convinced that they deserve the special permission slip that they need to get in order to have a gas station and a car wash? Each one of them has to be approved. Are you convinced, have they made the case, that this is good for that neighborhood, that it is providing services that are different from what's already all over the place over there? Are you convinced this is going to generate more traffic, it's going to generate more noise, it is almost certainly going to generate at least some additional crime, and it doesn't provide anything that is truly new or unique to the area? Most importantly, the people who have voted for you don't want it. They're asking you to say no. We can talk about by right all day long, this is not a by-right proposal, and they're willing to take their chances on the economy. They don't believe that market, that market forces will support a standalone convenience store. They don't believe that a restaurant is going to get shoehorned onto this property. They actually think that the odds are that if you're going to see something developed there, it's going to be something different, such as professional offices, such as a daycare, it might be something along the lines of a greenhouse or a nursery, one of those kinds of things that would be a much better neighbor to them and would be more in tune with the suburban character of the neighborhood. So they are asking you to say no. History from ten years ago and even longer, common sense and the comprehensive plan should guide you tonight, and all three of those say no. I'm happy to answer any questions, otherwise I'll yield to the people I represent.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Next speaker, please. Oh, excuse me, Kevin. Kevin, Kevin, got a question.
Your memory is much better than mine. I'm sure you've been reviewing the transcripts and so-
I'm sure you've been reviewing the transcripts and so forth. This one that was turned down a few years ago.
Yes, ma'am.
Said, what is different about this one than that one? Could you tell me if that one had an eight-foot brick wall separating this property from the neighborhood, and on the other side a 45-foot no build line?
I don't recall exactly what all of the architecture was like. I do remember from the things that were said by Mr. Burdon, talking about that being a wonderful thing, is that it had a 100-foot wide buffer area, basically showed an area that would remain a field. He talked about this having... I'm looking at the transcript from when he was in front of planning. He said it would be over 40,000 square feet, or no, that the buffer would have nearly 70,000 square feet of buffer zone. They did have... There was some kind of wall that was involved.
You don't have a site plan, though?
I don't have the site plan with me. Mainly, what I focused on was all the same sorts of discussions and language that was involved last time, and I know there was a lot of discussion and concern that related to traffic, that related to noise, that related to crime, and the only truly big change is that they took the convenience store part out. But remember, the convenience store doesn't drive the conditional use permit thing, because they don't need one. So you said no, 11 to nothing, based on a car wash and gas station.
But now, a convenience store, was that a 24-hour convenience store? This is going to be only from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m.?
I don't recall what the convenience store hours were. I do remember that the gas station and car wash, I know for a fact, had limited hours. In fact, I believe it was 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., so it opened one hour earlier and closed one hour later than what they're talking about now. But I saw that in this transcript. It was 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., which is not a huge difference as far as the neighborhood is concerned.
Oh, okay. What we just got was the site plan. Thank you. That's what I thought you had. Okay, but you didn't have that.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Yeah, let me...
Excuse me.
Yeah, Kevin, you're a very passionate guy, and I truly appreciate your advocacy. But I really think it's wrong for city government to eliminate a application because there's competition in the neighborhood. About a year or so ago, I had to put up a storage unit right next to an existing storage unit. And the reason that we did this was you cannot, we cannot pick and choose winners and losers. And just because there is a gas station or other car washes in proximity is not a reason for disqualification. You know, it's a property rights issue, as far as I'm concerned. And the point being, though, and I will state this upfront, one of the most difficult emotional decisions that this council makes at times is when you have commercial properties being considered next to, adjacent to residential. That's always a tough one. When I first came on City Council, you know, there was a big debate on the 7-Eleven that we put on Dam Neck Road, right near Lanstown, adjacent. But they turned out to be a good neighbor. And I think one of the things they do is that if you have a property owner that's willing to really work with the community, you know, if this does get approved, there's no question in my mind that, you know, they're going to outreach and continue to outreach to the adjacent neighborhoods. What has also changed is now you've got a Lidl in that neighborhood, and there is commercial development. And the other thing is the restrictions on the property with some ECU's implications and some other things. Something's going to go there eventually. But the point is, though, my hope was that if you get a good neighbor and somebody that's willing to do the buffers and the park and all the other things, you know, there's no question in my mind, when push comes to shove, a couple of years from now, this may be a very prudent decision for us to pass.
Well, if I can respond by just reading one sentence that's out of the report that talks about the comprehensive plan, "The general planning principles of the suburban area focus on creating and maintaining great neighborhoods through stability and sustainability, protecting and enhancing open spaces and places of cultural and historical significance, and creating and maintaining a transportation system that provides connectivity and mobility." These people are going to stand up and explain to you right now, they don't have mobility, they don't feel like they have connectivity, they don't think this adds to the stability of their neighborhood. They do think that piling gas stations and car washes on top of each other's can adversely impact property values, and I think that you've got enough experience up there to know that's true. And so that's a problem. So we're not trying to pick winners and losers. We're trying to protect property values and safety. And I don't know how with the current gridlock over in that area, police, fire, and rescue are supposed to get through. I'm just astonished that the city continues to allow development in already gridlocked areas at rush hour, at the beginning of the day and the end of the workday, and thinks that's okay. It's not okay. And it's going to get worse, and some people are going to die. If we continue to build and build and build and don't approve transportation, there are going to be problems. If an ambulance can't move, that's a problem. If a fire truck can't get through, that's a problem. And your own report says that right now, this area is over capacity. If you have bars and restaurants over capacity with people, what do you do? You write them a criminal citation. So what does the city do in having roads that are over capacity and then approving more things to add to over capacity? Doesn't make sense.
Any other questions from Mr. Martin-Gale?
Since you're addressing the traffic, and you must be looking at this chart, as I look at it, it says that the existing land use would generate 2,453 average daily trips, but the proposed land use would be almost 1,000 trips less, 1,528 average daily trips.
First of all, that wasn't provided to us, but secondly...
It's the planning commission report.
But second, I'll make this point. That assumes that you're using it for something that is a high, intense use, that it's a use that generates a lot of traffic. There is no way that a plant nursery generates 1,000 trips a day. There is no way that your average law firm, your accounting outfit, that your average dental practice, that your average medical practice, or any of the other things that could be built there by right, there's no way that those generate that kind of traffic. And everybody knows it. So what they're doing is they're going and they're picking out some intense uses that could be there by right, but we know they're not going to be built, because they haven't been built in all this time, and the competitors all around them, that's not going to work. So what they're doing is they're playing around with numbers.
Well, actually, if I might interject, that is an average of 550 trips, I think it was, Barry, is that correct, per acre of developable land in B2? So some are going to be more, and some are going to be less, so it wasn't an extreme. It was the average of the lowest and the highest, as to what that 2,450 or 2,500 is.
I've gone through this list, and given how many low-intensity uses there are that are B2, I can't figure out how that's the average. I would love to see the statistics that back that up, because it doesn't make any sense. When you look at all these different kinds of businesses, many of which do not generate a lot of traffic, those statistics, I think, are misleading.
All right. Any other questions from Mr. Martin-Gale? Let's get the next speaker, please.
Thank you.
Lynn Henry.
We welcome you tonight, ma'am.
I guess you guys are as tired of this as I am. I am homeowner in Scarborough Square, and I'm not going to give you the distance between car spa and the Rio and all that. What I am going to tell you about is something I heard about today, that I got through traffic engineering. The most recent crash report data, and they could only give me between 2013 and 2015, period, there were 19 total crashes during this three-year span at the Holland Road-Warwick Drive intersection, which ranks 138th out of 369 signalized intersections in Virginia Beach for crash rate. That's only going to go up if this project is allowed. We have collected over 433 signatures that I have with me here tonight. Others are going to give you more signatures that they collected at the polls today. These neighbors, the neighbors that would be affected by this project and oppose it, this will affect anyone trying to get down Holland Road between Lynn Haven and Ship's Corner, Scarborough Square, Cardinal Estates, Green Run, Waterfront Apartments, Buckner Farms, and more. That's a lot of people. That's a lot of voters. Putting a Sam's Express at 3264 Holland Road is oversaturation, and we don't get it. We understand this land is own business, and anything could go on this property. We have the same concerns that we did when the RaceCo was projected back in 2007. Now add the Lidl and the other stores, the Hardee's and the garage, the car repair place, and traffic is going to be outrageous. We had an accident on November 2nd. It was the night we had a Civic League meeting. It was right at the intersection of Holland and Warwick. People were cutting through Lidl parking lot to go around. People were cutting through Ship's Corner and coming through the neighborhood. We have two parks the kids play at, one in Cardinal Estates and one in Scarborough, that were directly affected by this extra traffic of people trying to bypass that accident. It was a nightmare. We understand the conditional use permit system is in place for a reason. We, the people that reside in Scarborough Square and surrounding neighborhoods, we, the voters, ask you to vote no on this project.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Inez Giles. Inez Giles. Kelly DeBorak. You, Inez?
Yes.
We welcome you, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor, Council, I have some more signatures.
You want to give them to me?
Yes, ma'am. My name is Inez Giles.
Right. Thank you.
I used to be president of Scarborough Square Civic League 10 years, oh, a little over a decade ago. Now, look, over 10 years ago, we were at capacity. You see what we have now. We have a Lidl, and, you know, you've heard a whole lot of statistics, we have a wetland right next door to where this property is supposed to be used for. We have a Head Start daycare center. We have a car spa on the end. Now, your commitment to us at that time was, let me get it, "The mission of the Virginia Beach City Government is to enhance the physical, social, economic, and educational quality of the community, and to deliver quality services valued by our citizens. The vision for our community as established by the City Council is to build a community for a lifetime. I have lived in Scarborough Square over 20 years, and I still live there at present." Now, if 10 years ago, we were overrun with traffic moving 10 years down the road, what's changed? What's changed? Now, we look to you to give us a unanimous vote, because we do not want this in our neighborhood. I've got grandchildren. I've got children. Look, I'm, I am, I was a little over 55 then, and I'm a little over 65 now. I don't need that. God forbid if community, I mean, emergency vehicles try to get in the neighborhood. We need help from this City Council, and we're looking to you to help us.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, please.
Thank you. Kelly. Kelly.
We welcome you tonight.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Kelly DeBorak, and I'm a resident of Scarborough Square. I'm a property owner. I'm not a renter in that area, and I think that's important to keep in mind when we're talking about development. My understanding is that our neighborhood is kind of a bad rap, high transition, but there is a very good base of property owners in the neighborhood. And my understanding is, is that 10 years ago, when the car wash gas station was presented, 10 years ago, there was a unanimous decision from the council to deny that application based on the need and based on the opposition from the community, from the property owners there. Nothing has changed in the 10 years. Now, I was a part of that 10 years ago. I purchased my home in January 2010, and I plan to stay in the area for as long as I can. I love Virginia Beach. I love the area where I live as well. The only thing that's changed is the development, the addition of the commercial properties. There's the Walmart Neighborhood Market that was built at Ship's Corner, the Lidl, along with all the retail space that has now been approved, and of course, that's by right. We didn't get a say in that, but if we did, I'm sure we probably would have, you know, been against that as well, just because of the traffic concerns. You know, so what we're asking really is traffic to be considered in that area. There's been no plans to widen that road, that section of Holland Road. I don't know if there's even a way to do it now with all of the approval with the commercial properties there. You know, and traffic's just going to be, continue to get worse. My daughter attends Green Run Collegia at high school, and her bus stop is directly behind this proposed gas station, and she gets off the bus at 2:30 in the afternoon, which is probably a peak time for them. Now, granted, she's high school, she's got a little bit more common sense than, you know, maybe some little ones running around, but it's still of concern to me that there are other bus stops there as well, elementary, middle school, and high schools, bus stops there. The final point that I'll make on this, before I digress, is really comes down to boil it down to, is this going to fulfill a need in our community? As has already been pointed out, there are several other gas stations in the area, there are several other car washes in the area, and I just don't believe that just because there's grain land there, there's a little bit of grass, that, you know, they need to build something because there's already somebody down the road. We're not saying we're going to determine winners, losers. We're just saying there's already those options available to us, and to be quite honest, they're not used that frequently. The only one that is used frequently is a car spa, which is a full-service car wash and detailing, and this is not going to be a direct competition, because it's a do yourself car wash and, you know, vacuuming your car out. So, you know, it doesn't serve a purpose in our community. Therefore, we ask that you vote against the car wash.
Thank you very much for coming down tonight. Appreciate it.
Nedra Howard. Nedra Howard.
What's your name?
Nedra Howard.
We welcome you tonight, ma'am.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Ma'am, City Council. Hi, I'm Nedra Howard. I'm also a healthcare professional. So to avoid repeating what's already been said, I'd like to take a different approach. Seconds save lives. My first concern for this project is the accessibility for EMS, fire, and rescue to reach our residents. With Lidl already open, and the rest of the shopping center hasn't even been completed, this is a nightmare for EMS. If you can imagine 3 o'clock on a Friday, buses are putting children off, people are getting off work, some people get off early on Friday, a resident has an emergency. How long do you think it will take EMS to arrive with increased traffic congestion? Who knows? If you add to what we already have, it's already an issue. And as I said, the other businesses in the shopping center hasn't even opened, so that's even more traffic that hasn't been accounted for. And because Lidl has their entrance on Warwick, that just multiplied the issue. I was hoping that the entrance would be to Holland Road. So people come around, most of the traffic is coming down Warwick Boulevard, because they want to be at the front of the store. So that's going to be a major issue. And again, this is not a service that we need. We have plenty, plenty of car washes. We have enough gas stations. We don't need it. So there's no need. Another suggestion that I do have, I mean, something such as... Another suggestion that I do have, I mean, something such as Sylvan Learning Center, Fitness Center, Community Center, something to help the children and the young adults in our community. We don't need another car wash.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Good to see you coming down. Next speaker, please.
Ray Aldridge.
We welcome you tonight, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good to feel welcome. Do you all feel welcome?
Every day.
Okay. I'm going to present something nobody has tonight. In Scarborough Square, Holland Farms, there's seven hundred and thirty-seven residences. In Cardinal Estates, there's a hundred and seventy residences. That's nine hundred and seven. Now, I think your neighborhood, probably the same as ours, there's at least two cars in every yard, and I can tell you some places got five and six. Okay? That tells me there's eighteen hundred and fourteen vehicles going out of Scarborough Square every morning, same eighteen hundred coming back in every evening. Now, that's thirty-six twenty-eight total for the day, for just the residences. Lidl Store says that they probably will have, in that strand, as they call it now, fifteen hundred vehicles going in, fifteen hundred vehicles going out per day. The last estimate I heard about this new car wash, Sam's Express, they were saying there would be seven hundred vehicles. I think I heard somebody say they dropped it down to five to make it more palatable to you. To me, that's five thousand eight hundred and twenty-eight, less maybe two hundred if they're changing. That's still fifty-six hundred vehicles going in and out of a two-lane road. Now, the intersection of Holland and Warwick is a T. It is not a crossroad. It's a T. So, we come out of there, there's bound to be traffic that's going to be coming in, traffic going straight through. Now, to add to those fifty-six, fifty-eight hundred cars, all of a sudden, we're going to have the Holland Road Project open up from Princess Anne all the way straight through to Independence, once they get through with all the minor problems they've had. Okay? It's busy now. I've seen it, so the traffic has been backed up from Lynn Haven Parkway almost all the way back down to Ship's Corner's road. I've seen the traffic jammed in the intersection tonight, for an example. When I came shortly after five o'clock, I come up Warwick to Holland to come down this way, and there's cars from Warwick that stopped at the light. There are two cars that came from Lidl Store that blocked that traffic, so traffic coming in could not go through, traffic coming out couldn't go, and they're just sitting there.
Thank you so much, sir. Appreciate you coming down, and you've run out of time. Thank you. Appreciate it.
I hope you get the same problems if you vote this down.
Thank you.
Patricia Gilchrist.
Next speaker, please.
Patricia Gilchrist.
They don't want to hear anything.
Patricia Gilchrist.
We welcome you tonight, ma'am.
I'm the mayor and council. I'd like to speak on this subject. I am a homeowner in Scarborough Square, and as I was thinking about the situation, I am in opposition of it because it's a situation where it's something that we don't need. The neighborhoods in this area are livable and sustainable communities, and these neighborhoods accommodate families with children, singles, young, old, middle-class, poor, and upper-middle-class. It's a diverse community, and all of us have different needs, and this is not a need that we have. When you can walk to three car washes and three gas stations without even losing breath, that means the area is already too saturated. The current proposal appears to be an assault on our community and will not add anything positive to our lives or any of the lives of the people that live there. This development is not needed. It will add to the already high rate of traffic and congestion in the area. Lidl opened, fine, Lidl opened, but they didn't do anything to the street but just split one of the lanes where I'm sure somebody's going to run head-on very soon, and that's going to be a tragedy. Currently, there are three or more car washes, like I said, within walking distance. This project also will attract more people to our neighborhood when we really can't accommodate ours. I've already had to adjust my work time when I get ready to go to work. I got to be ready to sit through that light three times just to get out of my neighborhood, and I work, and I work in Chesapeake. So, this, it can, it's probably going to get even worse. And as a homeowner and a citizen and a voter, I ask that you do your job tonight and deny this project and development. Thank you.
Barbie Bromfield. Barbie Bromfield. Bromfield.
Good evening, and I appreciate the time in your letting me address you.
We welcome you tonight.
Well, that makes me feel good.
Thank you.
Mayor Sessoms and City Council members, my name is Barbie Bromfield, and I'm a homeowner in Scarborough Square. And again, I know it's repetitious, but to review the current situation in our neighborhood, we have three gas stations and a car wash at Ship's Corner and Holland Road. We have a car wash business at Holland Road and Lynn Haven. We really do not need another car wash and gas station, and it really isn't going to add anything to our neighborhood. Ten years ago, a similar business was proposed, and it was not approved. In the past ten years, we've not seen any improvements to help the traffic situation. We've already have an increase in traffic since Lidl opened, and this is coming out on Warwick, and this gas station's going to come out at Warwick. It's going to be a mess trying to get out of our development to get to Holland Road. We work, we want to go out, and then we're going to be blocked. I've already seen where people coming out of Lidl are blocking the Warwick Road, so you can't even get out. And we want to worry about our emergency vehicles getting to us and being safe. You know, we need an ambulance, and they're not going to be getting there because of this. This proposal is not concerned with the citizens of Scarborough Square. It's not going to add anything to us or make our lives better, and we ask you to please protect us and our property and vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Come down, ma'am.
Tony Tabler.
We welcome you, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening.
I am not a resident of Virginia Beach, but I proudly call this where I work, and I have so for the last eight years. I've been in the car wash business for twenty-one years, and I believe this is probably throughout different areas, probably my ninth time before a city council, and I have just a few comments to make. This proposal right here is a beautiful proposal for that piece of property. The company that's proposing it is a great company. They have tremendous sites throughout North Carolina. They build beautiful sites. If you approve that, you would not be disappointed in the eight-foot wall, any of the landscaping. I would tell them, hey, in ten years, when the evergreen trees die, you got to replace them. I'm sure they would agree to it. If the neighborhood said, we want five swing sets, they would throw them in. You would not be dissatisfied with that. What you would be dissatisfied with is the traffic nightmare that it is going to create because it is already existing now without that opening. So, people mentioned some measurements earlier. That proposed exit site, if you missed turning in there, within one-tenth of a mile, you could turn into car spa and get a car wash exterior. If you missed that entrance and found yourself at the light, you could make a right, and a little over two-tenths of a mile, you could be at another car wash exactly like theirs. I do agree that it is not y'all's decision whether to pick winners or losers. It's not. But I believe on any city council, whether it's where I live or work, it is your obligation to the citizens to pick what is a balanced development in the area. Is that development that I'm approving going to make things safer or less safe for the people? Is it going to hurt or not hurt existing businesses? I mean, I'm not against competition. I never have been. If they're approved, I mean, the company I work for, we welcome them as competition. We have similar models, but they're not identical. Now, the one that's three-tenths of a mile away is an identical business model. But I just would like to, you know, have you guys think about, if we approve this, are we going to be happy years down the road with what we see visually, what they give back to the community? Because they, as a company, they give back to the community. It's easy to do so. But also, think about how you're going to feel when you see the traffic issues, the safety concerns. I know there was an accident there a couple of days ago, and one thing no one mentioned was the traffic coming from Ship's Corner to that is terrible, but if you go watch it now from Lynn Haven to Warwick that light, it is now backing up into that intersection, and that will only get worse. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Linda Russell. Linda Russell.
We welcome you.
Mayor, the council people. I've lived in Cardinal Estates for over fifty years. My neighborhood was the first one when I came, when we came here. I've watched all this. I watched, I knew when there was this paper road, roads would be open. I welcomed Scarborough Square when they opened my road, and my main road of Skylark, where I live, became the side road. My main road now is Old Clubhouse, but it's progress, you know? Yes, we have all these car washes. Yes, we have, there's three on Ship's Corner that are riding. One of those used to be a Texaco, Exxon, but the owner got sick, and I believe you knew who he was. I believe he used to tell me, when I would come to these meetings, he would say, tell me to say hey to you. And he got sick and couldn't afford to, like, you know, keep the business. And so, the new owner, which is now retired, while we're tires, they have, you know, other places too, and they wanted the Exxon, but somehow they couldn't get it. Something was going on with Exxon. They didn't want, you know, them to do that. So, it's now a Sitco, yes. So, where we have, each one does something different. They're not in competition with each other. They like to play around with that little gas thing, you know? But most times, they stay equal. One may be a penny up, you know, whatever. And yes, and that car wash, there is a car wash with the Texaco, and it does, actually does not, or I believe it's a Shell now, but that car wash is actually closed. If they would have looked a little bit closer, they would have seen that it's a storage place. And yes, we do have all these car washes, and if I go to Mount Trashmore, there's a line in all these car washes. We love to, we in Virginia Beach love our clean cars. Have you ever sat, there's very few dirty cars in Virginia Beach. Everyone say that.
Mine's.
You know? Huh? Yours is? Well, hopefully the rain washed it off. But anyway, like I'm saying, you know, we have to, if I would have sat down and said, hey, you can't come, you can't come, I was the first neighborhood there. I washed it all. And especially this, it was in there forty years. They were going to build what's Atlantstown there with the King's Daughter's Hospital. And so, that's when, you know, they decided to move it over here. They could have had that there. So, yes, there's many, many things that you can put there, and this...
We thank you so much. You've run out of time. Appreciate it. Thank you. Next speaker.
Barbara Messner.
Could you repeat it?
Barbara Messner.
Barbara.
I'm sorry, I thought there were a lot more people speaking from the group. And I really want to thank Kevin Martin Gill, who did an excellent job. Sam's Express is a chain. I'm curious if anyone knows if they're getting any tax subsidies. The homeowners also mentioned that Lidl's has been there and causing a lot of problems. The Lidl's have been given over a million taxpayer grants and tax credits. So, it's no accident that the Virginia Beach Economic Development is bringing in all these chains and all this new business, but it doesn't help the residents. The Virginia Beach Economic Development Authority, since 1989, all their projects, all the taxpayer subsidies and tax breaks that are going, have not gained one penny for us since 1989. We have a nine, a five-million-dollar debt. And public safety, I'm glad everyone realizes that, you know, having the emergency vehicles get here and get there in time is important. George Minz gave excellent comments about that when he was opposing the arena. I don't know how many people are aware that in Virginia Beach, we used to have a Level One Trauma Center. We no longer have one. The only Level One that can take care of serious accidents and disasters is Norfolk I think public safety is number one, and anyone, you know, anything you vote on, these people have a right to file inverse condemnation lawsuits because you're destroying their quality of life and their public safety. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carl Wright.
Next speaker, please. We welcome you tonight. We welcome you, sir.
Mr. Vice Mayor, City Council, Ms. Kane, all the good council folks. I'm here because of something that's near and dear to my heart, my community. I lived in that community. I lived there twenty years. These folks open their arms, accept to me. My family and my kids are grown, are and gone. There's other families there, younger families. My biggest concern is the safety in that community. You know, the issue I think the young lady made in regards to the EMS issue is a valid one. This is not about competition. This is not about winners or losers. This is not about a great lawyer like Mr. Martin Gill coming up and trying to put someone out of business. This is about the quality of life of a community. I don't want to be the one that didn't step up when some kid is run over and killed at the corner of Holland Road and Warwick because we refuse to come out and explain the importance of the issue at hand to the city council. I don't want to have that on my conscience, Ms. Henley. The issue here is that we're overburdened with traffic. Putting a car wash and a gas station there at this time, I'm not, I'm not against development at all. I think ten years ago, John said, Carl, something's going to, you're right, but it has to be something that brings the community up and ties into the community that's safe for the community. This is not about winners or losers. This is about doing the right thing. This is a good, the project, like you said, is nice. It's just not a nice fit for this community. That's it. Nobody's against Eddie. He and I went out there, we had, we looked, and we looked at it, and I understand Eddie works hard for his clients. It's a nice project. It's just not a nice project for that, that community. The lady said it's been there forty years. It was there forty years before that, and forty years before that, forty years after this, it'll be, but the issue is right there, safety is one of the issues. I've seen cars, what they're doing now, Mr. Mayor, I want you to go there. They've already started, the traffic has already started using a cut-through through Lidl, and that's what they're going to do with this car wash. When they can't get out, they're going to cut through that car wash to jump on Holland Road. Okay?
Got it.
And I know maybe you guys have made your mind up... And, 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 and I know maybe you guys have made your mind up, but listen, if you have already decided to go with it, at least table it to talk to the community. These are good people here. And, and I have petitions now. I would, you know, I, matter of fact, I'm rarely here during the election night. I was out at the polls. I've got to get out here and go to the polls. But I do have petitions here. All these folks are voters, and we're here tonight because this is an important issue.
We thank you so much for coming down tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
That's all the speakers.
Huh?
That's all the speakers.
Okay. Mr. Brine, you have three minutes, and then there might be some questions after that.
Hey, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate the folks who've come out tonight. I want to correct a couple of things Mr. Martin Gale had to say. 10 years ago, completely different application, 6,800 square foot convenience store with eight gas pumps opened 24/7. And two automated car washes and eight self-service car washes located at the back of the property near the residential. It was a great deal of discussion, most of the discussion, quite frankly, from the folks who came and the police dealt with this 24/7 operation of a convenience store. And there was no wall, and there was nothing like what's proposed today. So just so that's very, very clear. Mr. Martin Gale is a great attorney. He's not exactly good in commercial real estate, because he said, he implied that approving this is somehow not, is somehow interfering with the market. Well, the, the development across the street is the market. Okay? That's 70,000 square foot of retail, a fast food restaurant that's open until 2:00 in the morning. And the folks that, we had about 20 people come to meeting. Unfortunately, we weren't permitted to come to when they, they finally set up a civically meeting, though we asked them to do back in May, we weren't able to come and present. And I, I don't think the folks really understand all the benefits of this application. I, I hear what they're saying, I, we hear what they're saying, but the, the truth of the, the matter is that traffic with this, and your staff will tell you, is much less than what's going to happen with a by right development.
Folks, we've got to be respectful to everyone. Thank you.
And, and the market, there is absolutely now, we've seen it, Ms. Russell, who supports this, has said it, this, this property is going to develop, just like the 10 acres across the street are developing. And the idea that, that someone believes that it's going to be safer and help the property values of the people who adjoin this to have drive aisles and dumpsters and, and an entrance from Club, Old Clubhouse Road with a parking lot five feet from the road, those, that's reality. And there's folks that, Carl was nice enough to meet with me, he says, there's folks on, behind the Lidl that are concerned and complaining because there's no landscaping, there won't be any. That's the reality. And, and, and that's why this is such, as the one gentleman said, it is a fantastic project. And most importantly, the city staff did a traffic study, or had a traffic study done when Lidl came in, and this use is far less traffic than the median use. And our, my clients have looked at the plans for by right with a, with a specialty retail and a fast food restaurant, traffic is much greater with that. And this is passed by, a lot of this traffic's passed by traffic, it's not destination traffic. We add by far less traffic than almost any by right use, other than some of the ones that, that Mr. Martin Gale, who is certainly not a commercial real estate agent, have dreamed up that will not go here. You know, this will be heavy duty, commercial now, just like for all those years next door didn't happen, but that's what's going to happen here now, and it can't be anything else.
Thank you. We've got some questions. Mr. Wood.
Thank you.
Thanks. What I'm trying to wrap my head around is, is this, this notion of by right versus, versus what can be done here. And typically, when we, when we look at these things, we're, we're looking at, you know, what's going to be the least impact. And intuitively, when I, when I look at this versus what else is going on there, I'm just, it just seems to me, and I understand that the folks don't agree with this, this part of it, I'm trying to work, work through this in my head, is that this should be less impactful based on what I'm seeing. However, you know, you've mentioned that there, or I think the, the lady from, from the, the company came in and mentioned that they, they own this property now?
Correct.
So, so it's, it's done. So then it's a development company.
This property is going to be developed.
So it, it's going to be developed somehow. With that in, in, in mind, tell me a little bit more, you kind of touched on it during your beginning part of it, about kind of the advantages of this CUP versus what can be done by right, because I'm, I'm trying, trying to wrap my head around that part of it. And I got to tell you, the, the thought that I have is, is with this Lidl, which seems to be wildly successful, and obviously a lot of traffic generated by the Lidl, it, it just seems to me that somebody is going to want to buy this parcel from your client and develop it for something to take advantage of that traffic. And, and I fear that we won't have the control over it like we do now. But, but just if you could.
I'd be happy to try to summarize, and, and that is, and you're making, my point is that the safety, security, livability, and property values of the adjacent property owners are better served of what, what the benefits are. First of all, without this use permit, there's no restriction, will be no restriction on the hours of operation. And quite candidly, the other car washes don't have any restriction on the hours of operation, but my client is perfectly willing to compete with handcuffs by 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., which nobody else would do. You know, we'll, we'll compete because we have a better mousetrap. That's the American way. There's no elimination of potentially troublesome uses dealing with the sale and consumption of alcohol, which was a big, big part of the arguments against RESCO 10 years ago, which was a completely different application. But alcohol was, was stressed by everybody who was opposed. And these folks, no alcohol sales, that's, you know, those are the restrictions. I mean, that's all the alcohol-related uses. Without this, you don't have any enhanced street front landscaping all around the property, you just have the very basics. There's no guarantee that the CBPA buffer will be adhered to in its entirety. This is a B2 property that far, far existed, existed long before there was a Bay Act, and they can get variances to build into the variable width and the 50-foot landward portion of the buffer because it's, it's grandfathered. So if you have a good application, this keeps all that buffer completely untouched. There's no electric vehicle charging station. There's no 45-foot buffer with enhanced protection for the back of those condominiums. You've got a 15-foot setback, and you can have a dumpster right behind the, the townhomes, just like the poor, the poor folks have that are behind Amstel Square. Whereas now, your dumpster is 240 feet away from the back fence of the nearest townhome. You're going to have dumpsters that can dump, they can flip anytime, day or night, that, you know, right there behind them. And that's what the poor folks who are behind Amstel Square have. The no new community entrance sign, the, that won't happen. The pocket park, the 18,700 square foot pocket park behind that brick wall that completely segregates the uses, and the uses are all up in the front. There's no building, which there will otherwise be, most likely a building 35 feet off of that curb, just like the Lidl is across the street. And there won't be, in fact, in this case, there will probably be parking behind it, which is perfectly legal, five feet off of the sidewalk with one little strip of shrubs. That's it. Nothing else. Here you have 50 evergreen trees planted at five and six feet, that's going to be huge, as the one gentleman said. It, it will be a beautifully developed site, and it will, in fact, help the property values of everybody around it and the security, which none of that existed in that plan back in 2007, I guess it was. This is an excellent amenity, and it does really segregate and get you from the commercial into the neighborhood and, and make it a quieter situation. The elimination of a one-foot no ingress egress easement, which this requires all along Old Clubhouse Road, eliminating any access by motor vehicles to this site from Old Clubhouse Road, that goes away as well. The folks who attended the meeting that we held, overwhelmingly, most of them were impacted by the Lidl development, overwhelmingly said they wished that they had the opportunity to do something like this behind their property. But those and the traffic are the major advantages, because this is clearly a lesser traffic generating use, far, far fewer cars will be added to the streets to come to this because most of it is passed, or a high percentage is passed by capture traffic, not destination.
Just answer your question, sir.
Yeah, I'm just.
All right. Other question? Ms. Henley.
Yes, and I'm very much like Mr. Wood, I'm trying to really understand. Of course, the thing about a conditional use permit is that we get to put conditions on it. By right, we don't get to put the conditions on it. And, and that's so important for everybody to, to, to remember. If, if we are not doing a conditional use permit to develop the, the, the right, the projects that can go there, can go there with no conditions. And that's what you've got to think that you're trading off. And I just wanted to ask you, on these conditions that you have here for this one, I noticed that there's a list of uses that are prohibited. A and B are not underlined, but the others are underlined. Can, can you tell me why some are underlined and some? This is in the, in our agenda package on page three?
I don't have your agenda package. I apologize.
You have the answer for that.
Okay.
Those were changes added after the planning commission. So it's clear what the plan.
And were added after the planning commission?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. At the planning commission, you prohibited, you agreed that there would be no eating and drinking establishments with a drive-through, and there would be no convenience stores.
Correct.
And you have added that there would be no bars or nightclubs, no body piercing, no bar, no craft breweries, no craft distilleries, no motor vehicle sales, no motor vehicle sales and rentals, no tattoo parlors, and no wine tasting rooms.
That's correct, Ms. Henley.
So all of those have been agreed to as being prohibited uses on the remaining area.
That is correct.
But if we don't do this, folks, all of those things could be put there.
They can be.
And with no restrictions.
And, and, well, a few of them would require a conditional use permit.
Okay.
Okay. But let me also mention, if I can, that when, when we initially asked Ms. Henry to set up a civically meeting back in May, we presented and said, and, but there, she indicated there weren't a lot, wasn't a lot of people that were, that came to meetings and didn't, she, she had five people come. But we said, give us a list of the things you wouldn't want to see on this property. And we got a very short list. And we've added to it other things that we felt, because of all the stress 10 years ago, totally different application, about not having alcohol, because that was what everybody hit on this convenience store selling alcohol, we wanted to make sure that everyone understood, there's no convenience store, there's no retail sale of any alcohol that's going to take place here, because that's what everybody talked about 10 years ago.
But a convenience store is a by right.
It is a by right use, yes, ma'am.
So.
And that's, that cannot happen on the site as a fast food restaurant, which a lot of times people don't like, like folks at Grace Bible Church.
So fast food restaurants with drive-throughs would be allowed with no condition.
That's, yes, ma'am.
Convenience stores with, and I, I just have to think that when, when we considered this several years ago, and we were concerned about increased crime, it was because of the use of convenience store that would be open 24 hours and would sell alcohol.
Ms. Henley, that's 100% correct. That is exactly what it was all, came down to. And it was recommended for approval till we got to council, and the applicant refused to consider, you know, limiting his hours. Because frankly, I think if he had agreed to a substantial limit in his hours for the convenience store, it would have likely been approved then. I can't speak for what people in the council at that time would have done. But he refused to limit his hours of operation. These folks have, from day one, said, gone above them, and Kevin was correct. They did agree on the car wash, which was backed by the neighborhood, to limit that to six to 10. But the rest of it was wide open 24/7. And I mean, wide open. And with a by right development, which there are a couple of examples, you've got parking lots sitting there next to people's houses across, that people can sit in there all hours of the night, because you really can't keep them out.
Let me ask you, this property that, on the other side of Warwick that is now developing, that many people have mentioned tonight as being problem areas and increased traffic, was that previously developed and it's now being redeveloped, or was that totally undeveloped?
Totally undeveloped, just like this site. It's identical. And that's, again, where Mr. Martin Gale's idea, let the market, that's, that's exactly what's happening. The market is happening.
That, that's my concern, is that with that property developing, this property is going to develop.
Same is true with, with the, the Walmart. I mean, that was undeveloped back then. I mean, the, the development is here, and it's going to happen here.
We've got another question. Bobby?
Yeah. I'd just like to say something, and I just want to say, especially my friend Carl Wright and all the people that took the time and effort to come out here, you know, council is very thankful for your input. I am a champion of small business. I want equal opportunity for everybody. And a lot of businesses won't go to a location unless they find out it's a good location. What has changed in the 10 years, you've got as many Walmart there now, you've got the Lidl, because there's a market reason for it. And if I can just, you know, give you an example, you know, out in Centerville District, years ago in the 1970s, when I came down to visit, there was nothing between 64 and the Acredale Sattletory on Indian River Road. And right now, oh, guess what? We got traffic. Indian River Road, council, worst traffic, right in front of CBN, 104,000 cars a day. But you know what happened? The development, right near Lake Christopher, where I live, they built, right in Farrell Parkway, very busy. They got a Harris Teeter there, they got a Food Lion there, they put a Wawa there. And all the people that are in the traffic, like I said, they're on their way to somewhere, they pull out, they pull off, and they get back on for convenience. And the thing is, a lot of people that live in my neighborhood, and, you know, believe it or not, we're hoping that you find that the Lidl and the Walmart are amenities to your community, where you can get out and get shopping and go out and get some Haagen-Dazs and come back in two minutes. You know, that type of thing. And that's what we found, you know, living in the traffic areas that we are. Okay? So the point is, you know, I honestly believe that when all is said and done, that you're going to have some good shopping and, you know, close and convenient to you. And I'm convinced that this is going to be a good neighbor that is going to work with you continuously. And that being said, I'd like to make a motion for approval.
We have a motion for approval? Do we have a second?
Let John speak.
Okay.
I want to ask them, because I think we heard some concerns today that should still be addressed, independent of what action we take on this application.
Yeah.
One is, because I, I can, the traffic cycle of the traffic lights, I think we need to take a look at that. I think you heard, and I know you lost, I saw the city manager taking some notes on that. So I think we need to take some action, report back to the community on that. Secondly, I think we need to take a look at what's happening with the cut through of the parking lot. And we need to engage that shopping center, and I think we need to tackle that, independent of the action that we take here. Because I know, the vice mayor and I both know, when they change the hospital over to the data center, at certain times of day, that way backs up, and you can't get that left turn, and you sit through a couple of life cycles. But I appreciate, that's just one of those costs of doing business, so I appreciate that. But their situation is much more, I think, from what I hear, and I've been through that area, a little bit more egregious than that. So I think we do owe the council back and the staff looking at what we can do to mitigate those concerns, and making sure that the circulatory pattern of the place, whatever this is, doesn't contribute to likewise, you know, the shortcut. Because I do know those are concerns to every community, where we don't have the opportunity with a conditional use permit to try to mitigate those concerns. So I would hope that.
You got this noted, Mr. Hanson?
Sure, I do.
Thank you.
And just, I would like to report back, probably back through Shannon to her community, but I would like to know what you find out. But I'm sure Shannon wants to engage with that community directly as to what we can do. And if there's something we need to do to help you get there, let us know what that is.
Mr. Dyer has made a motion. Is there a second?
Before we second it, I want to ask a couple of questions, if that's okay?
Yes, ma'am.
I know Carl had mentioned working together with the community and having more community conversations. Be quite honest, I don't know what more we can do with this development. I mean, we're going to talk about it and talk about it, but possibly we could meet again and figure, figure out something else. What I'm scared of and what I fear is, is the words by right. We have worked, and as Eddie has, has, has explained, and you guys all know that we've got the buffers, and we've got all these improvements and conditions that have been put on the property to make it, I feel, as, as good as we possibly can with a car wash slash gas station. I do understand and empathize with everyone in regards to the traffic, with regards to the safety. I'm a mom of a young child with regards to the children. I, I've got all that. And it makes this seat that I'm sitting in very uncomfortable, and not, not a popular one right now. But I want to thank the neighborhood for all the calls and the emails and, and reaching out to me and all the work. out to me, and all the work that's been done around this proposal. And I truly understand those who oppose it and those who are supporting it, and also the rights of the property owner who own this property and have the right to develop it. And what I fear is, it is a by right development, and we have to take the applicant at their word that their Plan B is going to be a fast food restaurant slash strip center. You know, I'm inclined to say, Mr. Bradon, is your applicant willing to continue community conversations? Because I say that only because if we can improve that, I think we've got an opportunity to keep massaging that and working to make it better. Whereas if they turn around in six months, I'm not a gambler. I don't want to throw the dice and hope that they don't build a fast food restaurant. I would rather know and have some control over the privacy outside of Old Clubhouse Road, the ingress and egress on Holland, and all these restrictions that we've put on the property. I would rather have that ability to control that and picture what this looks like when it's finalized. Because we all want a green space, we all want a park, we all want something nice there, but it's going to be developed, it's not going to be a park. So are we willing to roll the dice as a neighborhood and say, you know what, these property owners are not going to develop it by right, they're just going to walk away? I don't think that's going to happen.
Roll the dice.
Mr. Bradon, would your client be willing to continue talking?
Let me be clear, that my clients are going to be great neighbors. They have been given everything they've had, and they've asked and asked and asked. I've asked so many times to Ms. Henry. And everything that's been asked, we've been willing to do. In fact, at the meeting that we had six, five weeks ago, Mr. Aldridge, after the meeting, said, look, all these things are really nice, said to me, straight to my face, if you all can get that turn lane and that exit or entrance off of Holland Road, that will reduce the traffic by 40%, 50% on Warwick, we should support this application.
No, I did not say that.
Okay. And that's, this has been, it's about the car wash. I'm sorry, but that's what it's about, you know? And I can't, this is, as one of your city attorneys told me, this type of car wash, the one up at Larkspur, is the greatest thing he's ever been to as far as a car wash, you know? And this is the same type. And we are not afraid of competition, but I think there are people out there that are. And that's my concern. We'll meet and we'll do, we've tried everything we can do, you know, and we'll continue to reach out to be great. I look forward to having opportunity to meet with Carl and some of his folks.
Well, I've heard from, I've heard from 20 people over the past two months exactly. I had two people call me, 15 people emailed me, and three people both called and emailed. And some people, Lynn, have contacted me like 14 times. But I have been contacted by 20 distinct people, and out of those 20 people, 18 of them have cited traffic as the reason that they did not want this to pass. Nine of them said a car wash already exists, two said it was too loud, two said litter, one said crime, one said pollution, and one says, I'm not giving you a reason, I just don't want it. So those are the reasons that I was given in my communications with the neighborhood. If the neighborhood is willing to continue talks, I am happy to defer this. And if you're not willing to continue talks, I'm happy to put it up for a vote, and we'll see, we'll roll the dice and see where we land tonight. What do you guys want?
Please, no.
It's like the price is right.
Shannon, we've got to ask you for your recommendation. We've got, wait a minute, we've got a motion. Do we have a second?
I'd like to second the motion. I think the applicant deserves an up or down.
You have a motion to second. You can make a substitute if you'd like.
That's fine, we'll vote on, if you have the second.
All right. Other discussion?
Well, are you supporting it or not?
I am, because of the, because of the...
You're the district person, so I value your judgment.
Yes, I will, I am going to support this tonight because I feel that the traffic count is...
Folks, okay, we've had, we've got to respect everybody as that is the proper thing to do.
I feel that the traffic count was the biggest reason that I heard from everyone, clearly stated. And anything by right that this applicant is going to do is going to be more traffic. So with that, with that simple motion, that is where I'm moving forward.
Okay, I call for the question. I'm sorry, Jim. Jim?
Offer a substitute motion to defer it indefinitely?
I have a substitute motion to defer indefinitely? Do you have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Okay, we will vote on the substitute motion. The substitute motion is to defer indefinitely.
Okay, you have two against and eight for. Eight for to defer indefinitely.
Okay, now we'll move on to appointments, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Vice Mayor would like to nominate to the Agricultural Advisory Committee, Mr. John Cromwell, Jason Dolly, and Barton Fry. To the Planning Commission, Michael Enman and Dee Oliver. To the Transportation District of Hampton Roads, Tara D. Reel. And to the 2040 Vision to Action Community Coalition, Leah Abbey and Danielle Jarvis.
Do I hear any other nominations? Hearing none, I'll call for the question.
Mr. Mo.
Aye.
By vote of 10 to 0, you have made the appointments as read by the vice mayor.
Is there any unfinished business? Is there any new business?
It's not definitely...
The official...